So we'll now move to item one. This is a referral response managing recreational vehicle parking. And I'd like to recognize, turn over to our city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I just have a few opening comments to make. Our city is currently working hard to manage conditions in our public commons, but much more progress is needed. We are kind of smart and an innovative city in the bustling Bay Area, but we wrestle with the kind of issues that many larger cities are struggling to manage. Right now, there are a lot of concerns about the cleanliness and the livability of our public spaces, whether it be from illegal dumping, homelessness, or RVs on our public streets. A lot of people attribute this to homelessness. While we have many large, well, we have a large population of homeless individuals, with the city our size, there are many more contributions and factors to the state of our city streets. The city of Berkeley has, over the past few decades, invested significant resources in homeless services designed to help people obtain permanent housing. Despite many homeless people being housed throughout these efforts, there are still a lot of people unsheltered in Berkeley. A variety of community impacts have been attributed to the large number of unsheltered Berkeley residents. And these impacts include accumulations of living structures and other items which sometimes spill into the public right of way, and large amounts of garbage, creating health and safety problems. Though some of these issues are homeless-related, as I said before, it's important to note that illegal dumping outpaces waste attributed to homeless encampments and also need to be addressed as its own issue. Tonight, we're seeking council guidance on two issues: managing recreation vehicle parking and addressing the cleanliness of our streets. The concepts presented are responses, some of which to council referrals, but also their concepts to helping get a clean, clean and healthy environment for our city. Thank you, and I will now turn it over to Kristen Lee. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Kristen Lee, and I'm the temporary assistant to the city manager. And I'll be going through the presentation tonight on recreational vehicles. But joining me are Lieutenant Randy Files, Lieutenant Schofield, John Hurtado, and Director Phil Harrington to answer questions primarily, but I'll be leading us primarily through the slides. So, as you know, the city of Berkeley has experienced an increasing number of RVs parking for long periods of time in Berkeley. And that's impacting public safety, health, and parking needs for residents and businesses. So this report and this presentation respond to two council referrals: one that was made in September, which was a referral to ask the city manager to look at how other cities use permitting to manage RV parking and suggest a permit process and place sensible limits on the number of RVs that can park in Berkeley. That was the first referral. And the second referral was from December, and it was to ask the city manager to establish an RV waste discharge facility with an administrative fee program and refer the cost for the facility to the budget process. So staff responses to these two referrals are outlined in the report. And either option would require additional resources and changes to the Berkeley municipal code. So, are the slides being projected?
Yes, they are.
They are? Okay, thank you. So California Vehicle Code and BMC Code make it unlawful to park or leave standing a vehicle on any public street for 72 or more consecutive hours. This section is typically enforced based on complaints, and motorists are provided a warning before a vehicle is sighted and/or towed. RVs often comply with the 72-hour rule, however, by moving a very short distance, sometimes as little as three feet, to the opposite side of the street or around the corner, which results in the vehicles essentially occupying the same general area indefinitely. So RVs can park for three days at a time, but enforcement is mainly complaint-driven. In December, BPD staff counted 193 RVs, campers, converted buses, and vehicles that had been set up for human habitation on city streets, and most of them were in West Berkeley. Community residents contacted the city more than 1,500 times with requests to address the presence of and/or impacts from extended RV parking in 2018. And these come through BPD dispatch and 3-1-1 service requests and through emails directly to council and staff. So the types of issues raised through these calls for service include the loss of residential and customer parking for commercial businesses and the illegal dumping of trash, debris, and human waste onto city streets. The city does have public restrooms and portable toilets, but there are currently no existing RV waste services in Berkeley. So I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Files to talk a little bit about the research that we did.
Good evening. We were tasked, excuse me, I was tasked with finding out what our neighboring cities did and to find out if there was a comprehensive plan in which anyone was addressing this issue. As you see the list in front of you, the neighboring cities have various laws in place, many of them equating to a ban, and some of them not actually being an outright ban per se. It doesn't say RVs aren't permitted. It'll say large vehicles of over 6,000 pounds aren't permitted, which is an effect of an RV van. So I was more looking at what people were doing and who had come up with a solution. And it was told to me, told to me many times, that a lot of places weren't taking a proactive approach, but were doing a lot of complaint-driven things, recognizing that it is a regional problem, and no one seems to have, wants to be the tip of the spear, if you will. No one wants to be the one getting all the attention and the energy for driving folks away. So much of it is complaint-driven. I spoke to staff in a neighboring city just Tuesday that says they're taking a more holistic approach with their ban, and they're going out in almost like a combined city services task force model with 3-1-1 people, parking enforcement person, a tow truck operator, maybe a police officer, and a mental health services provider. So they're looking at ways to facilitate not just moving the vehicle along because of a complaint-driven instance. They're also looking at ways to provide service. So many of the yeses, there are bans here, are working on that model. There isn't one place that I could put a finger on and say they have a solution as far as moving people. Like when you, if they leave your area, where do they go? It's been more or less like this route where people go to get services. There seems to be a program that shows some promise in Union City, but is not on the list, in which they have resources that are often done by faith-based individuals and groups who provide services and alternate locations. But that is, in summation, that's pretty much what you have in front of you and the list that we have. And I'm prepared for any questions around it.
So Berkeley's municipal code would need to be changed to pave the way for creating a new permit system. Option A in the report recommends that we amend the BMC in some way to limit the length of time that RVs and other vehicles would be allowed to park. We could amend two existing BMC sections to accomplish this. The first is BMC 1276, which is the house car ordinance. It currently doesn't define human habitation with any specificity, although it could be amended to do that. And that's, the proposed language is attached to the report, the amendments to that. The second thing, BMC code, that could be changed is 144120. And this is defined as, this is looking at heavy-duty commercial vehicles, which is now currently defined as a single vehicle or combination of vehicles that has more than two axles or is 20 feet or longer or is wider than 6 feet 6 inches. And it could be, that section could be amended to clarify that it could also apply to oversized vehicles used for activities other than commercial purposes, including RVs. So the other part of option A is developing a permit system similar to the residential parking program. And one suggested way to implement the program would be to allow parking for a maximum of 14 days per year in a specific location. And staff could create an equitable distribution of permits so that no one area of the city is disproportionately impacted. Applications could be submitted through the customer service or via the Internet. Moving on to option B. Option B would change, also change the two laws mentioned in option A, the house car provision and the oversized vehicle provision. And we could explore partnering with other jurisdictions in Alameda County to create some kind of safe parking program. We know that Oakland is looking into that, and Union City already has a safe parking program. We could also approach other cities and talk to them about potentially using funds that we have through the state of California, through the HEAP program, to partner and create some kind of safe parking program somewhere. And, oops, both options, A and B, we would recommend adding outreach services and some kind of flexible funding to be able to allow nonprofit staff to reach out to people living in RVs and provide them with some financial resources to help them end their homeless situation. And we have a number in the report that would fund that. So we wanted to highlight that there are some challenges related to any of the options presented in this report. Additional enforcement efforts would require additional staffing resources, so that's something to consider. And we have a large issue with towing. If enforcement results in towing, towing large vehicles is expensive, and not all companies will do it. So we can talk a little bit more about that if you have questions there. And then, you know, if we were to partner with outside jurisdictions and add safe parking somewhere else, that may, you know, have some implications for families who might be living in Berkeley currently in their RVs and, you know, with school-aged children. So we wanted to raise those issues as well. We did consider some alternatives, that is, developing some kind of sanctioned parking in Berkeley. We talked a little bit about increasing the enforcement of the 72-hour rule. And we talked about creating, in response to the council referral from December where it talked about creating a waste disposal system, we thought that limiting the RVs would handle the issue of waste disposal. So, but we did consider creating a waste disposal, creating a stationary dumping station, which has a certain cost to it, or contracting out to a contractor to develop a mobile service. And we don't have numbers for the cost of the contracted service, but we have some preliminary numbers for a dumping station. So to sum up, the two options before you are really referring option A to the city manager, and again, that's amending the codes to limit RV parking and also developing an online RV permitting system and funding additional outreach and flex funds. And then option B would be to adopt the first reading of the two ordinances that I mentioned earlier and also fund additional outreach and flex services. So, thank you very much, and we're happy to take questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I'm going to ask that we hold our questions until after public comments. And given the anticipated number of speakers, our rules of procedure say that if there are 10 or more speakers, each speaker will have one minute to address the city council. However, time can be yielded for a maximum of four minutes per person. So if you get three other people to yield you their minute, you can have up to four minutes to speak to the council. And this is an issue that is important to many segments of our community, our businesses and our residents, housed and unhoused. And I know that there are very strong opinions about this issue. I'd like to ask that we all be respectful of each other's opinions tonight and not boo or hiss, and that we respect all opinions as we proceed with the discussion tonight. So with that, sir, we'd like to start public comment.
Time for us now.
Sorry, one second. Before we, could we reset the clock? If those that would like to speak can please line up on this side of the room, we greatly appreciate it.
Okay, my name is Ron Nardelli, and I am a Berkeley resident in District One. And yeah, I have an RV, and I'm retired, and I call up my land yacht. And I use it to go salmon fishing. I use it to travel around country. I'm disabled, so there are times when I have to have my RV in front of my house for a week before I travel or a week after I travel. And anyway, I am sensitive to the dumping. I used to have a dumping facility that I stored my RV in, but they started charging like $300 a month. And the only two closest dumping facilities for RVs in this area are in Petaluma at the recreation park there or in Lake DeVal. And there's nothing here in Berkeley. So I have just a few comments. First of all...
Sorry, sir, your time is up unless someone wants to yield you a minute. Okay, so additional minute for the speaker. Thank you.
So anyway, a few things. One is, let's get creative. First of all, there was a good RV facility down in the Marina that got kicked out because of the hotel. Why not do something creative, like lease the His Lordships area? You could have an area for RV parkers. And then you get an area for people visiting in RVs. You could set up a dump site there. There's people in San Jose, professors, who can't afford housing, and they have dump facilities come by. They pay for it. Anyway, there are creative things you can do as opposed to making new rules and regulations, because there are rules and regulations that exist. Why not enforce the laws that exist instead of creating new laws? So that's what I'm here to say. And thank you very much, and if I have more time, I could talk further.
I think, sir, Councilor Hahn has a question for you.
Very, very quick question because of the long line. Did I understand that you have a bricks-and-mortar home in Berkeley and the RV, and you park it in front of your house?
Yes, I do.
Okay, that was what I wasn't sure of. So it's that it's so expensive.
Yeah, I live in West Berkeley. I have my houses, it's the oldest house in Berkeley. I live there, and I have an RV, and I travel in it. I call it my land yacht.
Got it. That's what I didn't understand. Thanks for clarifying.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi there. My name's Kimberly King, and I'm one of the invisible homeless. I'm also a renewable energy engineer and severely unemployed. Since 2014, I've been trying to put forth ecosanitary solutions to avert having to address this very scenario, the management of human excreta that's being raised this evening. Last year, I co-authored a paper focusing on ecosanitation and safe composting of human excreta for a community which any day will, now will be published in the International Journal of Water Sanitation Hygiene for Development. I'm also a member of the Technical Advisory Group for the International Standards Organization Community-Scale Resource-Oriented Sanitation Treatment Systems. This work group is trying to formulate a guide to safely manage the excreta in non-seward-off-grid environments. The performance data produced in the paper I mentioned adheres to this International Association of Plumbers and Mechanical Officials. And I want to get to the end, but basically what I'm trying to do is present you with an option C, because my time's about to run out, and additional resources per your option two.
Okay, speaker has an additional minute.
Thanks. So basically, my paper produced performance data, performance results that adheres to the International Association of Plumbers and Mechanical Officials Water Efficiency and Sanitation Standard for the Built Environment. And we can micro, generate micro-revenue. This opportunity could generate micro-revenue. And the results also exceed the National Sanitation Foundation as well as the American National Standards Institute's performance requirements. So all this said, you know, again, I'd like to reiterate that there would be an option C, the ecosanitarly compost system, to create this additional opportunity for folks who are using RVs, for those who want to live in tiny housings on tax-defalted vacant lots. I could go on and on. And I have plenty of information to share with you if you can indulge me. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi there, Elisa Mecaton, and I've lived across the street from Aloney Park since 1996. Prior to the surge we had two years ago, we had people living in cars or in vans, usually one or two. And frankly, we were able to handle that. It worked fine. We knew them, they knew us. I still get texts on my phone, "Where's Ray? I need him to fix my heater." So I just want to say that I find the surge problematic, but that if you could find a way to permit to have somebody in a block or a zone where there's one permit for somebody to come, and we get, have the chance to get to know them and function like a community like we used to, I can handle that. You want to put a tiny house outside my house for meditation man who's living in Aloney Park now, you're welcome to do that, because he's coming to my house for breakfast anyway.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please. Mark, could you get a wireless mic? Mike, we're going to give you a wireless mic.
Good evening. Is this thing working?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Good evening, Honorable Mayor. The state members of city council. My name is Michael Lee. A lot of you know me, some of you don't. Before I begin, I'd like to welcome our newest members of the council. Welcome to our slice of paradise. As I've shared with numerous members of this body, and specifically with the mayor, is you do not have a homeless crisis. You have a management one. So no matter what plans you devise, someone is going to be left in the doorway. The question is, what do you do with those people? Diana, before you attempt to solve this dilemma, it's nothing new. San Jose has a similar successful program. San Francisco is launching a pilot, which I'm assured by Director Jeff Kosinski, will be funded after our two-year battle with MTA. Oakland is now considering taking HEAP funds and creating such a solution.
So I'm sorry, Mike, your time is up unless someone wants to yield you a minute. Okay?
Thank you. Here in Berkeley, Councilmember Bartlet has been informally investigating this very same thing. Under his leadership, I'm confident to say that a program which is self-funding and self-replicating will be created. I urge you to follow Councilmember Bartlet's lead and provide him all the collaboration he needs. Clearly, what does not work is the continuing criminalization of the homeless who are victims of a society that places profit before people. As always, I serve at your pleasure.
Thank you very much, Mike.
Max Ventura. Last time I was here, I was talking about the fact that the homeless, blind black man who'd been hit at Telegraph and, on Telegraph at Durant during a People's Park, very peaceful protest. We'd had no word from the city on what had gone on. Well, you know, now we're a week and a half later, still, still nothing. And this strikes me, this newest attempt is about kicking people when they're down, at their lowest. Now, anybody who has the ability to have at least car or trailer or RV, you know, possibilities, is going to be less likely to be sick and ill on the streets, less likely to die of completely preventable illnesses. And there's, there's no room for this kind of bureaucracy. There's no room for this. Don't go paying people to do all these layers of bureaucracy. Let people be. Help out by having trash facilities and dumping facilities that are mobile.
Thank you.
And support people.
Thank you very much.
We're all human beings. We're unique. We have our...
Thank you very much.
...unique abilities and needs.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you. My name is Ava, and I just wanted to say they don't have to have these conversations in Germany because there's a Mitch Spiegel. And the Mitch Spiegel's a rent mirror. It's a very strict regulation of rent prices. So most Germans' rent, they don't own, and they don't have this level of homelessness. And that's, that's something we should all keep an eye on, keep in mind. The other thing I'd like to say is that the first speaker suggested RVs at His Lordships. And I'm at the Marina, I'm at the Berkeley Marina. I think it's a terrific idea, is there is not a lot of security down there, and it would really help having more people down there. There are many fine individuals. I'll also say that forcing these people to move their RVs constantly, and some of these things are not in the best condition, puts working-class cyclists like myself, people who commute by bike, puts us at risk. Let's just have a place for them where they can get a good night's sleep and don't have to move every 72 hours. It's silly. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. Okay. It's extremely fortunate for you all that your life circumstances have allowed each of your journeys to bring you to a place in which you're able to have influence, input, and power to make decisions that affect the lives of our entire community. It is a position that requires an immense amount of responsibility, accountability, and integrity. It is a daunting task at most, but one in which most of you asked for or even campaigned for convincing us that you are up for and committed to the challenge. You have an obligation to fulfill to all of the humanity that exists within our city. This great American society has taught us, or at least always claimed from its very beginning that everyone is created equal, that the opportunities that exist here are opportunities for all. However, we know that this is not true. We know that from the beginning, systems have been created that manipulate every aspect of our existence. Those who established this great nation structured the legal system and created laws, invented and created our economy, and most importantly dictated with the use of propaganda and force who could gain and who could prosper...
Thank you, ma'am.
...and who is worthy.
So Diana, you're yielding your minute? Okay.
Who could prosper, who could gain, and who is worthy? But that is all disguised by the slogan and fallacy called "The American Dream", a dream that pretends that everyone is on an even playing field, that the only reason one doesn't make it is because they don't try hard enough, not because predatory systems that commodify all of our basic needs, food, clothes, and shelter, and inflate the cost of such things beyond the living wage. It is easy to criminalize those of us who don't have what you have, to falsify and twist truths to gain support for privileged agendas. Be courageous, be honest, be creative, and most of all, remember that we are all human, born to this planet in this lifetime. We are all special, we all have purpose, we all matter. Be the first city to be bold enough to be inclusive of all our citizens and work together with all citizens. Get to know each other and understand what each other's needs, wants, and fears are, and come up with real compassionate solutions. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
James McFadden. The staff said this thing, these will, that the RVs affect safety. They do. They increase safety. The people that are in the RVs are safer than the people who are intense. And if you do anything to make their lives difficult, you are decreasing safety to our community. The solution provided by the staff are typical bureaucratic nonsense, and I urge you to choose option C, which is don't do A and B. They make the problem and drive up costs, all in the name of control. These policies are designed to drive the most vulnerable people in our society and to make it more comfortable for the rich. If you vote for any of these, you have bought into the heart, you've become really heartless cogs in the machine that is a machine of privatization. And that's what this is about. You're destroying the commons that we all want.
Thank you.
You've devoid of any empathy. Could I have another minute?
I think, sir, I think you yielded previously. Okay, so...
Okay. So, do I get another minute? Okay, okay. It says in the, in the thing, which prohibits the use has not been enforced since 2014. I think that ought to continue. Stop enforcing, you know, the, these measures that are on the books. Because we have a homeless crisis, and we'd have to have something for these people. And the RVs are really better shelter than anything. The only thing that this document does that I really, that I really was in agreement with was the self-operated $11,000 pumping station. That's a good idea. That's cheap. The other bureaucratic solutions are hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not millions. And if you've got to take 200 families and put them into housing, it's going to cost the city $5 million. So somebody's going to pay that $5 million a year to do that. So it's much better to keep the status quo and realize that this is, for the short term, this is the absolute best solution until we can build something better.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
These items are clearly in violation of the Brown Act. The Brown Act indicates that an agenda item must indicate clearly to people looking at it what's going to be talked about and discussed and possibly voted on. There's nothing in there to show what the content of the ordinances are that you may vote on tonight. That's, I never saw before that you didn't have a complete ordinance right on the agenda when you were planning to vote on it. That ought to be there. Also, the content of those ordinances, of those options, are not clear. Unless you do the math, which obviously some people have done, you wouldn't know that the RV or big house camp, whatever you call it, camper, could only be 14 days a year, actually doing the math. Actually doing the math, it comes out about 12 point something. And one of the ordinances indicates you can only have your camper in the rear of a building three days out of each 90 days.
Thank you.
You have to move every, every three days.
Ms. Bernardi, your time is up.
May I ask a question?
Councilor Dabla, you recognize?
What else did you have to say? I don't know whether I have an extra minute or not, but one of the ordinances indicates that you, you only have, you can only park behind a house. That means you have to have permission, of course, of the landlord or somebody who's living there. So you've got their permission, and yet you can't stay there more than three days out of 90? You've got to move every three days and then come back the next 90 days and live, and be there for only another, I mean, it's ridiculous. I can't believe that my tax money is going toward paying staff to write this kind of stuff. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Topher Brennan. I am a Berkeley resident and parent in District 3. And I have a friend who lives in an RV. And frankly, I am appalled that the city council is even considering two ordinances that would effectively ban people from living in RVs in the city of Berkeley, though they're written in a way that's designed to hide that. You say, oh, we're going to have more money for outreach, but if, are you going to pay my friend's rent? Like, frankly, and the other thing I want to say is, I would rather parking spots be taken up by RVs than cars that are people driving around. Now, it's unfortunate, it's unfortunate that the RVs have to be moved every 72 hours, but other than that, I don't have to worry about the RV hitting me. And, you know, I'm a parent. I take my son everywhere on foot. I don't have a car, and half the cars in this city do not respect crosswalks. When I'm standing in a crosswalk, they will blow through it. So I'd rather have fewer cars driving around in the city and give those parking spots to RVs.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Michael Smith. I'm a PhD student at UC Berkeley. I live in an RV with my girlfriend and an elderly man. She's a, she's a community college student. I'm the only one who makes enough money to take care of the three of us. It's much easier to pay for the things that we pay for now than if instead I had to pay rent on a place. So personally, for me, living in an RV is the system that works best right now. We don't use the plumbing in the RV, so this whole human waste thing is not something we do. As far as I know, it's not something most people in RVs do. So that's the, as much as I want to say about the human waste thing. And the last thing I want to say is the idea that the count was 193 vehicles in the city that are taking up parking spaces, but it's not a tremendous amount of vehicles. So I think in terms of this idea of saying, well, the vehicles are in places where it's hindering business, that's not really, that seems kind of ridiculous to me. You could say, well, don't park your vehicles on Telegraph, don't park your vehicles on Shattuck, don't park directly in front of a business, and you could easily regulate that kind of in that way. So those are the only things I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
First off, does anyone want to yield me a couple of minutes? Yeah, okay. Thank you. I've got it.
So Stephen, you want four?
Four would be great. Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, City Council, and City Manager, I'm Stephen Donaldson. I have a business called Radiant Brands in West Berkeley. I am just a block from Fourth Street, and I'm right near the University Overpass. And I also live on Cornell Avenue, which is just above San Pablo. I've been in Berkeley for over 40 years. I have three kids raised here. I represent about 45 to 50 businesses, over 300 employees in Berkeley, probably, you know, a third to half the small business income in the city is generated in our district in West Berkeley. The RV problem that grew over the last year was when enforcement stopped in the Marina, and then people came there, and then they were evicted, and they all arrived nearer around Harrison Street in great part. And suddenly it brought all these impacts of both waste, but also taking up all the parking, debris, fires, variety of issues that come. The 72-hour rule has not been enforced, and the impacts of these RVs, which are now spreading above San Pablo, are having impacts in a lot of people's lives and businesses. And, you know, here's what we, we're kind of looking at, is measure the, the two issues that you brought up, A and B. We are more prone to A, which enforces now and looks at some permitting, but we are highly against having a waste treatment facility. It will attract RVs from everywhere. We will become the gateway for RVs, for a small city. And over 100, and over 100 people living in, in, on the street is astronomically high for the city of Berkeley. We are compassionate. We want people to have proper housing if they want, but a recent survey done by the city of San Francisco showed 90% of RV dwellers do not want to live in housing. They want to have their own place to live. Now, I, that's fine, but they don't all have to live together in people's neighborhoods. They can move around, they can go other places. I understand they may be there for a variety of reasons, but they've been attracted to our community. We're welcoming at a certain point, but we have to provide services, as indicated, other than the waste treatment ones, to help people find solutions to get their vehicles operating, social services, whatever they need to move on. But we really need to have the streets available for our businesses in our community. And I really think this kind of reflects everyone's perspective in West Berkeley who works and lives there.
Mark, can we please stop the clock?
So anyway, thank you very much. I appreciate it. I, I've said what I needed to say, and I appreciate your consideration of this.
Okay. So, sir, before you speak, once again, this is an issue that is very important to our community, and we, we need to be respectful of each other as we have this important discussion tonight. So let's be civil, let's respect each other's opinions, let's not interrupt the speakers, let's, let's afford everyone the respect that they deserve. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Leland. I recently graduated from UC Berkeley. I worked two jobs, and I lived in my car because I can't afford rent in the city. So that's one thing. I don't think the city has a RV crisis. I think we have a housing crisis overlying a rent crisis. As for the purported problems of dumping and waste, if you criminalize people living in their cars, it puts people on the streets, which should be pretty clear that it only adds to the problem, because all their waste and trash is going to be on the street already, just like them. In particular, option B, as I read it on the internet, someone pointed out that it wasn't, like, presented clearly here, which I think is true, specifies that human habitation doesn't need to include plumbing or a kitchen. So those vehicles shouldn't already be adding to the waste and dumping that's happening. So it seems like some of the options being presented are going beyond trying to fix the problems that are being purportedly addressed. And the cost of human impact and the cost of towing, I think, would outweigh the solutions, like more trash cans, which would reduce the amount of trash being put onto the streets.
Thank you. Thank you. Sir, sir, Councilmember Harrison has a question for you.
Could you say a little bit more about the, the one piece of legislation you think doesn't address the problems? I didn't quite understand what you meant about the lack of facilities within vehicles.
Oh, option B, as I read it, like, in the brief that was online, said that it would amend the code to specify that having, like, a car set up for human habitation doesn't need to include plumbing or a kitchen setup. And presumably, those cars wouldn't be disposing of human waste or cooking products.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Before I start, can I ask to yield time?
You want to yield time, or you want time yielded?
Sorry, I would like time yield.
Okay, so I see, I see
You'll, you'll see when I speak, but
Please. I see one hand, so you have a minute, additional minute. See, I have two minutes.
So my name is Pilar Fisher. I am a resident at Ashby Lofts, which is located on Ninth Street. We, about a year ago, you had moved some homeless into our, literally our backyard, into a space that was supposed to be designed for a walking trail and a bike trail. We are completely empathetic to homelessness. We help homeless all the time. However, it's caused a lot of safety concerns and a lot of public health concerns. Since then, we've had a lot of traffic. We've had high theft rates at Berkeley Bowl, which is our neighboring business. They dump their urine and feces into Berkeley Bowl's garbages and things like that. We have families that live here. I'd much rather see them living in RVs as opposed to on the streets. I mean, the weather conditions, just every kind of condition living on a street is, is bad, as it is. We have experienced them coming into our property, sleeping naked in our garages where our kids have to walk by. We have found multiple syringes in our properties since they've moved in. And I just think it's, it's highly, it's sad that you move them as opposed to finding solutions for them to have housing, or whatever the case may be. They're, they're living on the streets. I'd much rather see them in a designated location, like someone mentioned before, where they could be in RVs or tiny homes, provide housing. The lack of services is, is just unimaginable. And I would honestly like to propose a plan to hire the homeless themselves, the people who have to live this, and hire them to be the ones to come and clean the, the space and the streets and everything, you know? Give them the jobs, give them the opportunities, the ones that are capable, the ones that are willing to do it. That way, you are, you know, killing two birds with one stone. You're giving them opportunity to work and have jobs, and then we're cleaning up the streets. I have more to say, but
Thank you.
I have other residents as well. Oh, no, I was, I was just going to say also, we were told that there was not enough people to come. We, we don't have, every time we call a, a, on the non-emergency line, we're told that's, it's not, the police, the police don't deal with that, it's the city. You know, when, when there's things going on, we have a lot of, like I said, we have the homeless living right in our backyard. And so in the middle of the night, they're, they have generators, they have, they're doing campfires and things like that. They're making noise, they're arguing, fighting, doing drugs, and, and we have to see that. And so if we could propose a plan and, and stick to it, to have services, more services provided, and, and like I said before, giving jobs to the homeless to come in and clean up, and, and just be the outreach team to come in and talk to the other homeless, I think it'd just be a better, a better resolution. Or, yeah, the services.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, would anyone like to yield their time to me? No? Okay. My name is J.C. I'm also a Berkeley resident. I also work with the chronically homeless that live in places that are uninhabitable. Just to piggyback on what Ms. Fisher was saying, I more or less would like to see services and the implementation of the flex funds and the housing outreach. And again, try to model the downtown streets model that Oakland has right now, where they are, they are helping the homeless to create opportunities for them to work towards a progression of getting out of homelessness. It is not by choice that they're homeless, it's by default. We all know what's happening here in the Bay Area with rent services, and I would really like to see an implementation of the RV location for them to be in a safe haven with services attached, with housing services attached, with compassion and empathy attached. Also, with the RV services, at least give them options for housing, whether it's shared, affordable, below, below market rate, but also treat them as hu, as human beings. They are human beings.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carolyn Browning. I'm here, I'm actually the property manager at Ashby Lofts. I'm here in regards to the homeless encampment that is actually directly behind 2919. I've actually sent emails, including pictures, to the city. They actually almost burnt our building down. There's a bit of scorch on the wall. The city actually came out and removed a lot of the trash, but within a couple of days, it's back, and it's growing, and it's growing. And so I've actually done some things around the property to try to secure the property for my residents, but I need the help from the city, because I do have children there who are afraid to come down to utilize the laundry room, because we do have the homeless coming around. I know that you informed one particular individual to come down here, which is behind 2909, but of course, that's going to draw other people there. There's a lot of meth heads that are back there, and it's true. My emails are constantly being flooded throughout the night from my residents. And so I'm asking, what is the city going to do to rid the property of the squatters that are on you guys' property?
Ma'am, thank you for coming. I'd like to refer this to the city manager, and we take these issues very seriously. Thank you. Next speaker, please. If we can keep public comment moving forward. If you could speak into the mic so we can get your testimony?
Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, my name's Janet Enos. I grew up in Contra Costa County, and I went to the University of California, Berkeley, as did all my family. I never thought I would be homeless, so I bought an RV. I find that, I'm really disappointed in Berkeley for not standing for what Berkeley does do, and that's accept people the way they are. RVs are far cleaner, if you've gone down to Harrison Street, it, it, there's no garbage around. It's, it's not nearly the shanty town that the other ones are. And the only problems, I hear you saying that there's parking problems, waste, which I don't understand, you know, they're all self-contained, and security, safety. I don't know, maybe the police commissioner, whoever you are, can, can you comment on the fact, do you have to police them that often? The RV owners?
So ma'am, we don't engage in a back and forth during public testimony?
Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. Okay, anyway, I think you guys could do better on these options. I think, you know, they're shallow.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, I live in Berkeley, in the district that, West Berkeley, that's being most affected about what people are saying. And honestly, I find it appalling that you would even consider a proposal that's going to criminalize RV living without first fully creating another option for all these individuals. These are people, valuable members of our community, and people who live in Berkeley. We should be supporting everyone who lives here and finding good solutions for their very serious problems. I like the idea of providing waste, like disposal services. That seems like a good step to help these people, and a step that we should be taking. And that's just the first of many steps we should be taking before we consider any laws or changing any codes that would make these people unable to continue living in the best and safest way that they have figured out how to. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Aliana Geis, and I live at 1141 Hurst Avenue. And I'm unaffiliated. I don't speak for a business that pays me a wage. I don't even speak for my household. I speak for myself. I'm a voter, and I live in a house. I'm not homeless. But I'm good friends with people that are, and they're valued members of my community. And I wouldn't really want to live here if the only people who were my neighbors were the people who could afford to live in the houses next to me. You know, that would be boring and terrible. But the thing that really, really gets me, is like killing me about this whole meeting, is that you're saying, like, good things. Like, there's good ideas in there. You say, we have a waste problem. Here's a solution to the waste problem. I'm like, yes, that makes sense to me. But you say, we have, like, a parking problem, we have, like, an RV problem. And what I'm hearing is that you don't have that problem, you have a problem with the idea of people being homeless.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name's Lou, and I once delivered mail to a trailer park, and most of the addresses were Admiral Colonel General, indicating the type of people who live in trailer parks. Anyway, if you read the Berkeley Municipal Code, or at least the last time I did, it does permit RV parking or dwelling west of 10 and 1/2 Street, the street, the alley between San Pablo and 10th Street, and north of Camellia Street, which seems to be where there's a lot of RVs parked. They don't bother me. Also, if you don't have a place for them to properly dump, there are going to be a few scofflaws who dump their holding tank into the storm sewers. Why not open up RV parking, allowing homeowners to allow RVs to park in their driveways? Thank you.
Hi, my name is Luke Sherman. I'm a policy analyst at the UC Berkeley Law School, where I work on wastewater issues. But I actually don't want to talk about that. I want to back up a little bit, and first make a point about this idea that you're going to offset, you're going to offset this issue where you kind of push people out of their RVs or vans or what have you, with more homeless services. And I think that a lot of folks that live in their cars now actually don't use the homeless services that are provided to them. They actually get a sense of autonomy from being independent, which they can do through their RV or van or, you know, beat up Subaru. And I think it's important to consider that and consider the autonomy those folks have currently.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Scott Huffman from Reed Investments. We are the owners of 901 Gilman, the former Pyramid Brewery facility. We bought that facility in September of 2015. We spent three years trying to attract new businesses to come in and replace what was predominantly vacant building. We made a significant investment in that project. We made a significant investment in that project, and were successful in drawing five new businesses to Berkeley that had never been operating in Berkeley. Those businesses brought 200 new jobs in total, and they are being crushed by the fact that they can't find parking spaces for visitors, for employees. We don't have all of the parking on site, we have significant parking, but not all of it. And so, when the marina shut down and all these people came over, it's had a significant impact, just in their ability to operate their businesses. And so, those businesses are the lifeblood, it's not just on, on Gilman. We've seen it on 4th Street, we've seen it on 6th, we've seen it all, all across West Berkeley. And those businesses are huge contributors to this community, and they're bringing jobs. And if we can't support them... Thank you. If we can't support them, they are gonna go somewhere else. And so, I, I read the op-ed piece by Rashi, thank you very much. I think there's a lot of great, there's a message in there about compassion, and we don't wanna see people being kicked when they're down. We also need to know that there's other people in the city that have to be represented by their elected officials, and those are the residents, those are the business owners, and they do make a positive difference. It's not just some rich person, there's people creating jobs here in Berkeley that are meaningful. And then on the, on the clean living spaces, the only thing I'd like to say in my last few moments is that we have heard that Amtrak is seriously considering closing the 4th Street Station because of the conditions that are going on under the overpass and on university. And so, I, if that's the case, I would just encourage someone from the city to reach out and find a way to keep that from happening, because that would be detrimental to the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So first, before we go to you, Steve, that's the first I've heard of that. That's very troubling, and we will certainly look into that and communicate with Amtrak. Yes?
Hi, my name's Steve, and I got an F in public speaking, so... I live and work in the flats, and I just wanted to add a perspective on how the RV parking and encampments has had an effect on Berkeley businesses. I've had RVs and encampments in front of an 8,000 square foot vacant warehouse, it's been vacant for three months. Warehouse is kind of hard to find, and it usually goes pretty quickly. These days, though, not so much. I've had at least three prospective new business tenants walk away from the site because of the activity and the encampments out front. That equates to perpetual vacancy, and it equates to a loss in tax revenue to the city. We need to find another safe place for the RVs, and we need to enforce the parking. All right, thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I would like this guy to have to move his house every 72 hours. I've been homeless since I was 16 years old, I was kicked out on the street, I've had a life of harassment by the police here in Berkeley, these laws that, that aren't being, you know, enforced anymore because, you know, they were deemed unconstitutional. To, to try to bring those back, I have PTSD right now from that. I just now finally got a good job, a good way to make money through Postmates. The gig economy allows homeless people to get up and do something, but, you know, like, you, you wanna take my home away, like immediately, you wanna like push me out, you want me to like leave the area that I can actually do the gig economy and make money? This is my way out, and, and you're trying to take it. It's not good. These people really have no grasp of what it, what it is to live this way. I wish I had more time, but...
You have, another minute was yielded to you if you'd like to take it. Okay. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm some homeless guy. I got a couple points, first being, I think, rather obvious. Nobody wants to illegally dump their waste or otherwise defecate into a bag and then dump it in a dumpster. It's a very shameful act. The only reason they're doing it is because you people have repeatedly refused them the basic access of a porta potty. Second being, you, Jesse, you came down, and you went to Aquatic Park, you told my friend Kent that you were to be able to stay in his trailer and live in that. And since then, he has gotten a ticket for living in that, and it's, the owner of it took it, because he didn't wanna lose it, took a lot of time and money to make that. So he is back in a tent against your promise, and now you are campaigning to push everybody in that situation back outside. And I would like to ask that you guys don't use us as props for your campaign. If you make a promise for us, keep it, don't just use us for a photo.
Next speaker, please.
Mayor and council, my name is Charles Clark. I'm a tenant in Berkeley who was priced out after four years in District 1. And in that four-year period, I noticed, as I walked through that area, that the RVs parked along the side actually predated by some many months, the ouster from the marina. So what I guess I'm reporting is that the erosion of respect for the public commons long predates the marina stuff. And so, on that basis, in order to maintain parity with the laws of our surrounding jurisdictions, I guess I would get behind Option B, because the idea of making sure that our laws actually match up with everyone else, then it's up to enforcement. And I have to say, it's gonna be very difficult. Truthfully, you know, the, the RV community has gotten very used to lax enforcement. And so, the first time you actually will push back, there will be trouble, but I have to say-
Thank you.
-you know, you have to do something.
My name is Carol Denny, and I've lived and worked in West Berkeley for decades. And I really wanna thank the majority of people who came here tonight, who so clearly illustrate that the homeless people in Berkeley and the RV dwellers in Berkeley are the most thoughtful, creative, resourceful, compassionate people. I have been neighbors with so many of them for years in my neighborhood, and we, we pride ourselves on working things out. That's who we can be as a city, rather than following the cities around us who just wanna slam the door. We can do better than that, and I don't in, in any way disrespect the staff's report, it's just that I wholeheartedly hope that you send this through the commissions of people who are ready to assist with these issues, and help all over the town create the creative options that I remember some of you, when you were running for office, offered to explore with us. Thank you.
Well, I don't get it, because this council says that it wants to find housing for all of the homeless, but here you have a bunch of homeless people who have housed themselves in some primitive way, and you wanna make it difficult for them. You wanna harass them out of town. You want, you, you, you wanna take control of them so you can push them around. That's not right, and that's in contradiction to your own intention. If you go ahead with this kind of thing, what you're actually saying is, you have no intention of housing the homeless in this town. Now, I wanna ask you, you come up with these proposals that are in this, in this item, how many RV residents were involved in writing them? How many RV residents were involved in conceiving of them? You have left out the people who understand the problems. You have left out the people who know what it's like to live there in formulating this policy.
Thank you very much for your comments.
This, that makes it undemocratic. There is no democ, there is no democracy going on in this process.
So ma'am, you could, you could still use your minute, 'cause he didn't take it. Okay.
Counsel, thank you very much for understanding that this is a challenge for West Berkeley and all of Berkeley. When I moved here several years ago, it was somewhat tolerable, and I'm gonna represent the side of the homeowners in here, so please don't demonize me. As Rashi said, we have a right to live here and with clean streets, with access to parking, so small business owners cannot feel alienated, so they're not gonna shut down, so they're not gonna push away traffic. However, when the marina closed to RV parking about a year ago, or eight months ago, it became intolerable. We have RVs visible from our house 24 hours a day, some of them will stay literally for months at a time. You have to call the parking, and even then, they come out, they continue and stay for four and seven days at a time. I have picked up large bags of human waste, and I am not lying, in front of my house. I have picked up bags of all kinds of household waste in front of my house. I have been threatened with my life. Now, certainly, this is not representative of all the RV people here, but I bring this up to say that we need some kind of solution here. So everybody deserves, you know, some level of peace and some level of cleanliness.
So I think your time is up.
Can somebody yield me? Okay, I gotta, I gotta a minute, yield it over there. So, you know, West Berkeley does not, you know, deserve to bear the brunt of being a free RV park. You know, this should be spread around the entire county, the entire city, or even the entire state. You know, can we not, can we not work together? You know, Piedmont has literally zero RVs, Hayward probably has zero RVs. Why can't we work together and sort of spread, you know, the finances and the support so that, that one small group of people isn't bearing the brunt? I mean, this isn't what I moved to Berkeley for, to pick up trash every day. You know, I, I care a lot about this city, I have a, a lot of vested interest in this, I have a ton of time and heart invested in this city, and I think a lot of other people here do, and we really want to see something done here. But the current status quo is absolutely broken, it does not work, it does not work for everybody, it only works for a small minority of people. And the last thing I wanna point out here, we're talking about 200 RVs here, and the comments we're hearing are not representative whatsoever of the general population of the area. So please keep that in mind as you think about a solution.
Thank you very much. Suzy, before you speak, Suzy, before you speak, I just wanna clarify something, which, sir, we are actively working with adjoining counties and cities on trying to find a regional solution to this issue, and we'll speak to that when we get to our council discussion, but I wanna assure you, we recognize that this is not a Berkeley issue, this is a regional statewide problem. Suzy.
Thanks, thank you, Mayor. I, I, I wanna first of all, sort of applaud the, the speaker who just came before me, because as you all know, anytime one speaks in any way about limiting or restricting the status quo in this community, it takes an enormous amount of courage, and you feel like you are all alone. And I know that there are many people out here who are here in support of his position, who do, who just don't wanna take the, the heat for actually getting up here and saying something. And so, I, I wanna be really clear that he said, what he said about the fact that this is not necessarily representative of what you're hearing in the room, of what the sentiments of the community are really, are really clear. The second thing I wanna say is, the way this circumstance has come down with, with the RVs, they are all in Rashi's district. It doesn't affect any of your districts, and so it's so easy to vote against this regulation, because it is her problem right now, and, and it can be perceived as her problem, and in fact, this is a citywide problem. And I just have to, today when I came over here, I counted 30 RVs. Can I have another minute? I counted 30 RVs at, at one intersection as I was trying to leave on my way here to get to this meeting. We are taking the brunt of this in West Berkeley, between the RVs, and we have, believe me, we care about the people on there, we care about this. It's not that any of us want to see people on the streets, but we are taking this disproportionate portion of the burden that the city is carrying. We, between the RVs and the encampments that grow every single day in West Berkeley, we are feeling utterly abandoned. And I say this to you- Because we are not getting the help that we need. We get rid of one encampment, and another one starts up, we have people starting fires, we have people defecating in our neighborhoods. These are, and, and I, and this, this is sometimes because people can't help themselves, these are people in many cases who need help. But we need enforcement, we need low, a low-income housing, we need some, some long-term resolution to the RV situation.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Max. I am a Lawrence Berkeley National Lab employee, and I live in a van, because unfortunately, the wages that we are able to acquire through our union do not pay well enough for me to afford rent in this crazy environment that we have here in the Bay Area with the rising rent costs and inflation and gentrification. And I just want to bring some contrast to this discussion. I'm fairly well off, but I still live in a van, unfortunately, and I pride myself on my independence and my low impact as a van dweller. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Marissa Seko. I've worked as a domestic violence and sexual assault advocate for the last seven years, serving people in Berkeley, and I do wanna let you know that because all of the domestic violence shelters are often full in Alameda County, many of the families that I work with are forced to live in, in their cars, or in RVs, or in vans, and I'm very concerned that if they no longer have that option, that means that they have to go back to extremely dangerous situations that where their families are not safe, or just to live on the streets, which is also, you know, women and children are extremely vulnerable to trafficking, to sexual exploitation, to assault, to all forms of violence, and, you know, these options do not provide the services that these families desperately need to be able to be safe and to become rehoused. These people want to have services, they want to find housing, and I feel like the city needs to have better solutions than just forcing them out of the city altogether.
I'm Kirsten McDonald from the Chamber of Commerce, and I think it's important to remember that our streets are commons, and they need to reflect the interests of all demographics. And right now, the businesses that bring money into the city so you can pay for all the services that you wanna provide are suffering. They have a right to the commons as well. A small Berkeley environmental startup that has grown exponentially and that is seriously changing the world is so fed up with the negative impacts from encampments and RVs on their business that they're moving out of Berkeley, and that's a shame for our city. Housing insecurity is a regional problem. Trying to fix it on a municipal level puts Berkeley in a very precarious position. We should be on par with all of our other East Bay neighbor cities, as the staff reports show, so please move forward with Option B. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mayor and council, my name is Barry Braden. I own Fieldwork Brewing over in West Berkeley. We love being a Berkeley business. We chose to locate in Berkeley because we do believe in, in many of the things that even folks are talking about here tonight. But the RV situation over in our neck of the woods has become very difficult, and Harrison Street, where our business is located, is, is really impacted by this. Garbage, we've got syringes, we've got, our employees, when they leave late at night, not feeling safe. It's just, we, we're just asking for some solution that makes sense, that's common sense. We want you to do everything that you're doing to work and, and help solve the homeless crisis. We're, we're very supportive of that. However, as Kirsten just said, the commons is for everybody, and that includes a business like ours, which last year generated $400,000 in sales tax revenue for the city of Berkeley. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Julie McCray. I own a business in West Berkeley, down on Gilman. I've been in the city since I was eight years old, so really long time ago. And I came here in a van, and I lived in a van. Back then, though, we treated it very differently. If we needed to sleep somewhere at night, we parked at about 11 o'clock, and we were up with the sun, and we moved on. That said, I wanted to give you guys kudos, or the city kudos, for the Pathways Project down at Second and Cedar. I think that's fabulous, and I think we need more of that. As a business owner, though, in the Gilman District area, and somebody who is dealing a lot with other small businesses, sorry, I'm a bad public speaker, we're having a lot of issue, especially up and coming small businesses, where people have put everything they have into a business, and then campers camp outside. I had one woman tell me just yesterday, nobody's stopping to get drinks from me because they're scared of the encampment and the campers that are there. Okay, murder.
Okay, thank you.
So this young woman said to me, you know, "I'm, I'm worried because I'm not getting the business I did get, is there anything you can do to help move these guys along? Because I, I can't pay my bills if this doesn't change." Just today, I have a picture in my wallet, actually, of, or in my phone, of, there are two campers on my street, and outside of one of them, I found seven syringes. Somebody also called me, said, "Could you come over and help? We need to call the police, we need to get these picked up, 'cause I don't wanna touch them." This happens every day, I hear something like this. Every day I'm having to deal with this. So I want, I would love to see more things happen so that they either have a safe place to park, or more things like the Pathways, and I know that we're discussing the steel plant, and part of my dream would be that part of it be another Pathways, on, on just a section of it, so that we could have more of this transitional housing to get people off the streets. Anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Madam City Manager, Mayor and Council, in your hearts, I know that you must feel how wrong the options are, which are before you tonight. You have heard the opinions, no, the pleas, of many of your constituents tonight. Better manage the monies and the services that they fund. Show some compassion for your fellow human beings. Cut back on the- Cut back on the overhead associated with managing the homeless problem by hiring people experiencing homelessness to clean up homeless encampments. Provide basic sanitary facilities and services, and the mess that you see associated with the complete lack of such luxuries will greatly reduce. Here is an interesting piece of information. Homeless people, both with vehicles and without, are routinely advised by Berkeley Police to keep our homelessness west of San Pablo in the industrial area. It's no wonder that residents, both housed and unhoused, are feeling the problem rapidly approaching critical mass. You can't cram a growing problem like homelessness into a finite space like the westernmost part of West Berkeley and expect the situation to be tenable. Does it occur to any of you how ridiculous it is for you to publish modified building standards to help you, to help? Can I get a minute?
Yes, I believe that the speaker at the end of the line is yielding a minute.
Thank you. Sorry, to build, she, does it occur to any of you how ridiculous it is for you to publish modified building standards to help you shelter Berkeley residents who are victims of Berkeley's shelter crisis, which allow for people to shelter themselves in recreational vehicles while simultaneously moving to essentially ban RVs from the city altogether? Don't vote for either of these short-sighted and half-assed gentrification tainted options. Think outside the box, like the Berkeley that we all knew this city to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Luke. So firstly, I was just wondering now why that dude in the suit got four minutes, but anyway, I would like to, I would like to rebut the claim
Because other people yield you their
Yeah, okay. I would like to rebut the claim that the creation of sanitary disposal facility would create a pull factor. These arguments are similar to regressive immigration policies that are developed to deter migrants from coming to the U.S., but we all know that migrants have little to no knowledge of these policies prior to moving. If anything, be leader in the region in adopting a proactive approach to homelessness, don't look at other cities. It is shocking that public toilet facilities don't really exist here. In Ireland, we have self-cleaning toilets, which unfortunately costs 20 cents per use, but it's something that you should look into. Everybody poops.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Jonah. I moved here about five years ago, and at the time, I didn't have anywhere to live. And so I had a friend's RV that I stayed in, in Berkeley here, and it was great. I stayed for about a month or two. During that time, I went to many different job interviews and was able to get on my feet, and now I'm a taxpaying citizen. So homelessness isn't something that is always permanent. In fact, most homelessness is a temporary situation. 14 days doesn't quite seem like enough time. 14 days sounds kind of like a bunch of New Yorkers want to rent like a Vanagon and then pretend to be hippies in Berkeley for two weeks. So, it sounds like the refuse is a big issue. I don't know, is the dumping from an RV being dumped in the very center of a street? Because another commenter mentioned that the dumping is into sewer drains, and just, you should keep everything in perspective here. You can find articles about how just last year, over 70,000 gallons of raw sewage was dumped into the bay by Oakland and other counties, so.
My name is Cameron Wu, and I'm a homeowner, homeowner in West Berkeley. I'm representing the silent minority tonight. On any given night, we have anywhere from two to four, five vans, or, or trucks, or buses parked on our streets, so those are my neighbors. I have to be honest, that, that I do not, I'm not affected like some other people who've talked tonight with great problems of debris or, or waste. There, they seem to have no negative bearing on me. But in my travels around West Berkeley, I can see tons of problems with debris, parking issues. I do respect the need for businesses to be able to park, or shoppers or whatever that bring revenue in the city. I would ask that you do not retain the status quo, because it is not, does not seem to be working for anybody, residents, homeowners, van dwellers, it doesn't seem to work for anybody. So please be creative and innovative in, in your solutions. Thank you.
Next speaker, please. Please come forward.
Hello, my name is Ninja Kitty. I've been living in Berkeley since I was 14, and I've been homeless ever since. I want to bring up a little bit of history. If you guys remember, a few years back, you guys tried to pass a law called Measure S. And this was a similar kind of law, just kind of, let's sweep the homeless under the rug kind of situation. Now, you see, in, in, in the proposal of this, a lot of the police started to enforce the law before it was even on the ballot. Now, I was a student at the time, and it seems that there's a repeat of history, is I am a student again now, and you want to up, you want to bring up more enforcement, there needs to be a lot more outreach. But on top of that, a lot of us actually can take care of ourselves, and actually had and were in the ability to move into a house. Like, me personally, I have been in perpetuated homelessness for six extra years because of a similar law that never got passed but was enforced. So I, I just, I implore you guys, please think about how this could affect people that can't afford to live in a home, but actually are attempting to do something with their lives and have aspirations.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Josh. I do live in a van. Unfortunately, my vehicle broke down here some time ago, and I didn't have the resources to fix it. I was burdened with the responsibility of taking care of a dog at the time, which makes it very difficult to get a job, or really make any kind of stability happen in your life. Luckily, I was able to park my van and, you know, rest my head for a minute. Without, you know, if you guys are going to be shoving people in vehicles off the road, I would have had no chance to rest, and I would have shoved right down the road with all the same problems I had the day before. So please consider what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, my name is Mary Bames Steinberg, and I'm a West Berkeley resident and a homeowner. And I would like to say, I, I fully understand the health risks that people are talking about and how those need to be taken care of, but I would also like to say that the people in vans and RVs and people on the street are my neighbors every bit as much as the people in houses are. And moreover, I would like to say that this is part of a greater problem. This issue does not exist in a vacuum. And I specifically would like to say this to Councilmember Kesarwani, who is also representing me, and he's not always been very knowledgeable about the relative amount of affordability in what's being built versus just luxury trickle-down housing. And this is a very important thing that I would like all the trickle-down housing advocates on the council to really, really consider. If you don't want people in RVs, then you really need to start addressing housing at levels that people can afford in the lower brackets. Thank you very much.
Good evening, fellow council members and the Berkeley community. My name is Aiden Hill, and I'm a former city's council candidate for District Seven, specifically representing Peoples Park activists. And I believe fundamentally that housing is a human right. As a candidate for city council, I spoke for months, talking to this body, trying to convince them about ways in which we can protect our unhoused citizens. Tiny houses, tents, RVs are all low-cost solutions for the waves of climate and economic refugees streaming across California. Let us not forget that we live in very destructive times. The President of the United States has threatened this city and this state directly for the past two years, and as government shutdowns and wildfires occupy our minds, we cannot forget that the unhoused people have lost, we have lost, like Michelle off of Shattuck Avenue. Now, according to Mario Savio, Mario Savio had talked directly about what happens when laws go into effect that do not represent the people. And as a candidate for city council, I tried to bring the imagery and the designation of what it means to be a student activist to the forefront, especially in these times. We no longer have the luxury to sit back while people are trying to clothe themselves and house themselves, while many people are sitting in their luxury condos with rooms empty or filled with pianos, as I've seen across Berkeley. Mario Savio had suggested the two ways in which citizens and civil disobedience have impacts. First, when laws exist and, and they're promulgated and they're totally unacceptable, in which people violate it again and again and again until it's rescinded. But also mention that there's methods in which we can repeal laws, sums with grievances of people are more, and more just extending the laws as a whole, but rather the whole arbitrary system of power, such as this city council is delivering us today. These laws against unhoused people, specifically in RVs, are arbitrary systems of power. Let us not forget that this council approved an 18-story building which could have housed many of these residents right here today, but chose to give that housing directly to people who did not need to move to Berkeley, who did not need to work here, who not lived here their entire lives, but only can do so because they have the means of thousands upon thousands of dollars in their tool belt just to survive. We, the people of the Bay Area, and especially those who are landless, will protect our communities by any means necessary. PG&E are the ones creating wildfires across this state. Unhoused peoples are creating fires for warmth. Construction companies across Berkeley are creating hazards and waste. Unhoused people are just trying to be people. The city government prefers cranes over school buses, concrete over communities. I envision a Berkeley for all of us, one in which the class that you live in, the house that you live in, or if you're just on the street, you have the access to basic needs across the community. I've been trying for years upon years since I was accepted to UC Berkeley, accepted, and I chose Berkeley instead of going to UCLA, instead of going to UC Davis or UC Riverside, because I care about this community and I have family here. All people here deserve to live a life full of dignity and freedom from cruel and inhumane punishment. Berkeley declared itself a sanctuary city, the city of refuge for undocumented Central Americans in 1986. Why can we not use the City of Refugee Act to protect unhoused people across Berkeley today? Citizens of Berkeley, remember, fear is the enemy. I have watched my comrades across California lose their homes to wildfires and floods. Do not allow this to be the issue that divides us. We must protect all forms of shelter for people, because climate change will come for all of us indiscriminately. Last year, we were Berkeley united against hate. Now is the time for us to be Berkeley united for love. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. And ma'am, before you speak, I just want to remind members of the public, under the city council rules of decorum, if comments can be directed at councils of body and not, you know, maligning or targeting any particular council member or member of the staff, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Williams. I didn't come with any prepared remarks, and I didn't plan to get up, but I just wanted to go on record that this is a very complex problem, and I want us to all avoid vilifying any of the people groups, including vilifying our leaders, who I think are really doing their very best to come up with solutions. I don't want to vilify homeless people, RV dwellers. I think that the cost of living in the Bay Area is very difficult for all of us, but as a very small homeowner, and as a very small business owner, I do have to say, and hope not to be vilified for saying it, that it's very difficult. I've, I've owned a business in West Berkeley for 21 years. It's an arts business, a woman-owned business, a small business, part of what we want to nurture in our city. I've had homeless and RV encampments around my business, fights breaking out in front. It's a kid-centric business, and it doesn't feel safe for parents when they're bringing their children to my place on Page Street. And it's really, we need a solution, and a compassionate one.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Hi there. I'm Randall Reale. I'm a West Berkeley resident and business owner, and I have been impacted by RV dwellers in my neighborhood. Sometimes I can't find parking in the morning, so I have to park two blocks further away. Some, it's tough, I know. And honestly, we forget that these people, they are Berkeley residents, they're employees of the businesses around me, they are people who eat at the restaurants around me, they go to yoga classes near me, they're people trying to live. And, you know, I support that if there's a sanitation problem, then yeah, let's take care of that, that's human, that's public health services. So let's build a safe space, set aside space for these people who this is how they've chosen to live, and take care of them, which is what government is supposed to do. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Diana Gordon, and I own a business, a hair salon, at University and Fourth Street. I have 30 employees, and 97% of them are women. And I can say that we're kind of at ground zero. We're, we're hit pretty hard with people coming into the salon, and I've had a gentleman that was naked, I've had my client spit on, I've had many, many scary things that almost happen weekly, and what I'm afraid of is that we're, I definitely don't want to demonize the homeless. I, I understand where they're coming from, and it, like anything, there's, there's good people, and it feels like the people that are coming in have drug problems, or that they might be mentally ill. And it feels really scary. And that, that's all I want to say, is that I hope that we take that into consideration when we're talking about this, that we have to manage all of the people and, and the things that go along with that.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Eric. I was born and raised and educated in Berkeley. I'm here representing the Smith and Walters family who owns the block between Gilman and Harrison and Eighth and Ninth, as well as the seven tenants that are occupants of that building. And just want to, you know, reiterate that the area's been very negatively impacted by lack of parking is a big one. I mean, these people have, we have artists in our building, we have world-changing environmental firms, their employees can't park, their customers can't park. We clean up needles, feces, urine, et cetera, et cetera, every day. Excuse me. So, we need to do something, we need to do something right away, but at the same time, two things can be equally true. The owner of Smith and Walters has personally housed two homeless people in his own home for over 15 years. So I'm here also to support the RV people, the homeless, the people living in tents and all that. We need to find a space for them. The city owns large parcels of land down by the Marina. By my calculations, it would take five acres to adequately park and service 200 RVs with restrooms, et cetera. There's got to be a place to do this. It's a two-part question. Let's do something soon, but let's also do something grand, so that at the end of the day, we can all feel like we worked on this together. There's enough lit minds in here. Just because you're homeless doesn't mean you're not educated, doesn't mean you're not brilliant. We need to work together to find a solution. The, the homeless people, the people with RVs don't want the businesses to go out of business. The people with businesses don't want the homeless people, or the people living in RVs, to suffer further. They're already suffering enough. So can't we figure out a solution together? There's got to be one.
Thank you very much, sir.
I was talked into this by my grandchildren, who tell me, and I have, as I have told them that Berkeley is a compassionate and wonderful place to live, and that we, it's why we're here. I've been here since 1947, and, and I admire the solutions that people find. I know we can find a solution that includes encouragement for the small businesses and the people who, and helps them, helps some businesses provide for the very people who are living, because they're living from hand to mouth and have no place to stay or sleep. And I am thrilled at the many, many voices that I've heard today, and all, all of them expressed compassion, and I, and, and love for their fellow man. And it's a very, very good feeling. It means Berkeley is still here. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Wish to point out a potential unintended consequence of option A, which envisions a permit system. You have a model that there are needy people who need to have RV permits You have a model that there are needy people who need to have RV permits and to park, but if that permit system is put in place without any means testing, you're going to find a lot of smart people who discover a great way to save on rent and will move in. The well of aid is deep all throughout the Bay Area. All of these policies have the potential to bring a lot more people into the magnet that will become Berkeley. Beware of that unintended consequence. And when it comes to compassion, I don't think compassion is a gutter to park your RV or to pitch your tent in. I think that when you've got the level of problems among a subset of these populations, it needs to be managed. You have to have a facility, an RV park, someplace with a check-in, a checkout, a gate, a security guard, and a way to take the problematic behavior and nip it in the bud before someone has to pick up the pile of human feces.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Okay, my name is Jessica Prado, and I was, used to be a former UC Berkeley student. I graduated in May, and I became homeless after my first semester in graduate school. I began living at the Berkeley Marina, where we established a community that was called Berkeley Friends on Wheels. This community constituted of UC students, gig economy workers, veterans, elderly, and disabled people, and we were forced out of the H.S. Lordships parking lot at the Berkeley Marina on July 10, 2018. This eviction occurred with the notice of construction to paint lines on the parking lot and place a metal gate, so no one could return or enter the parking lot. Vehicular residents then returned to the initial lot of Marina Boulevard after Berkeley council members had told the community to relocate to another parking lot within the Marina. But after moving back to the initial parking lot where people live over a year, administrative subventions were written to the 12 households that remain on that parking lot. Berkeley police threatened the community with towing, even though they lacked jurisdiction over Marina grounds. The citation threats forced families and all vehicular residents back onto the industrialized streets of West Berkeley, and the H.S. Lordships parking lot has remained empty and unused ever since. At the Gilman District, a population of unhoused residents living in tents and vehicles have found a location to remain away from heavily trafficked areas by pedestrians and cars. Here, we still have found home and community amongst each other, but now our community's visibility has become a problem. Tonight, this proposal makes a call for a vote to ban poor people from Berkeley. When the city of Oakland is spending $300,000 on establishing a state parking program with local churches, the city of Berkeley is spending $362,000 to hire one outreach person for RVs and allocate money for vehicular repairs. This sum is not nearly going to repair the, is not even going to repair half of our vehicular population in Berkeley. Most importantly, the proposal which seeks to ban overnight parking and sleeping on public streets inside of a vehicle is a violation of the Ninth Circuit Court ruling on Marty versus Boise, which states cities cannot prosecute people for sleeping on the streets if they have nowhere else to go, because it amounts to cruel and unusual punishment. Where in your proposal are you allocating a place for us to go? It's unconstitutional and breaks the Eighth Amendment.
Mark, I think--
Berkeley Friends on Wheels strongly believes that a safe haven should be allocated for our community on wheels, in order for our neighbors to thrive and find stability.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
While others establish, while order must be established on the streets, vehicular residents are asking that our opinion also counts, because city policies, while city policy is being drafted. Solving the problem does not mean the city should ban our existence entirely from Berkeley. Thank you.
Thank you. So, sir, you already spoke. I'm sorry, people can only speak once. I'm sorry, sir, under our rules. So, if that gentleman would like to speak, he's more than welcome to, but you've already had your time. Next speaker, please.
I wish there had really been more time and some commission discussion of this before it came up tonight. And I understand that there seems to be a lot of pressure to vote on one of these solutions tonight, and it doesn't feel like we're quite ready to do that. There's been some unintended consequences of what happened when we closed H.S. Lordships' parking lot, because now the people have, are just flooding District One. And so, and then it sounds like our police department, from what one of the speakers said, is directing people to go to that place. We've also heard a lot tonight about the shortage of parking and what a problem that is. And as I've attended many city meetings, one of the goals of the city is to get rid of parking, to get rid, to get people out of their cars. Does anyone want, is there anyone left? Okay. Thank you. So, I would really ask that we take the time to find a place where we can have safe parking, and I would certainly request that the city spend the money, and I'm a taxpayer, and a property taxpayer, spend the money on a dumping station. I think that's really important, so that we're not having illegal dumping on the streets, because there's really no place else to go. And I think that about does it, ma'am. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, would you like to speak?
Could you speak into the mic? I would just like to say that with all the good work that I'm sure you folks have done in researching the other cities and what's been happening in other cities, I hope you keep in mind that in San Francisco, when there was similar ordinance like this in the 1990s, what occurred out of that was some people, before the ordinance was even passed into law, some people were afraid to have people know that they were living in their motorhome. So, they started using candles instead of their generator, caught their motorhome on fire, and burned their child to death. That's something you want to keep in mind, because that was the result of the same type of knee-jerk response that you people are about to do right here. I would really stop and consider what you're doing before you jump into this. And keep in mind that what a few homeless people do shouldn't reflect what happens to everybody else. Now, if you look into it, what you'll find is that the police chief actually knew the child, and became so upset about it that he refused to have any police hassle anybody in their homes for over two years, and was eventually fired for it.
Thank you, sir.
You guys keep that in mind.
Last, but not least, my name--
Almost last.
My name is Sandy Simon. I have a small ceramic art gallery on Fifth Street, and I just want to make two points. One is that I have a good friend who works at The Gardener. She goes to work at dawn, and every morning she passes drug dealers under the University Avenue Pass where the camp is, and they come well dressed in bicycles, and they are selling drugs to people under the overpass.
Please, let's not have any interruptions.
Secondly, I want to point out that I read in Berkeley's side that they're expecting 44,000 new students in the next, what, 20, 20?
You're already here.
Well, more are coming. And I think UC Berkeley should be held responsible for finding housing for people that they are bringing in to make students think--
Agreed. Sir, next speaker.
Yeah, my name's Steve. I'm a longtime Berkeley activist, and I lived out of a van for two years, back in the 70s. But I remember when Reagan emptied all the mental institutions out of the mentally ill people in the late 70s, early 80s, and those who were not a threat to themselves or others. And they're still around. I feel there are a lot of responsible people living in vans and RVs, and I think they're being totally unfairly punished for the outrageous cost of housing in this area. And to let a few people who have mental problems, you know, cause them to be displaced is outrageous to me. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
One minute is fine. My name is Bill. I own three acres in West Berkeley with seven buildings, and I have about 10 tenants, and they're all bitching at me right now. It's very difficult to keep them happy. I spend most of my retired time taking garbage to the dump, and talking to the homeless, and cleaning things, and helping, and bringing them burritos, and I put out trash bags and barrels, so that they do their, do it in the barrel themselves, rather than throw it on the ground. I'm willing to take anything away that they're willing to give me, and it's just something that I continually do. I spend thousands of dollars a month and a good amount of my time trying to make my area presentable to the people who work there and come there to buy things. And it's very, very difficult, because a lot of them are not normal people. And the ones in the RVs are no different. We had to trash and drag an RV away one time, because it was strewn garbage all over the street. So, only you can solve this problem.
Sir, if you can, please wrap up.
Only you guys can solve this problem. I can't solve it, and people like me can't solve it. Only you. You have to monitor those people--
Thank you.
--do something.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other speakers on item number one?
The Homeless Commission had voted that the city establish, identify, a location for the RV. And I hear a lot of these complaints tonight from the neighbors, and it seems as if that they are not in opposite to identify a location that's a very well-run location, that you can, as one speaker said, really serve everybody that's here tonight by exploring a location for the homeless that's well-controlled, that doesn't have syringes, that has sanitation facilities, that is with respectful people. And the alternative is that there are people here who are going to be displaced, and they are also residents of the community. So, that you have people who have described that they have job ties to the community, people who have children in schools, and we have to be concerned about that, too. We're going to be displacing that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, would you like to speak?
Hi, my name's April, and I have a business, and I live in West Berkeley. And one comment that I agree with a bunch of other homeowners and business owners, just that it has gotten more problematic, but I run every day, like three times a week, at the Berkeley Marina, and when the RVs were down there, I felt like they were respectful. I saw a little bit of uncleanliness, but now it's just gotten so much worse, is what I want to say. And I do agree with the needles, defecation on my porch. I have a jewelry business. My clients are bringing in expensive things, and they feel nervous. So, that's it.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to address item one? Managing recreational vehicle parking. Is there any other public comment on item one? Anyone after this speaker, if you can please line up?
Hello, my name is Barbara Ridlander. I'm a homeowner in West Berkeley, District One. And one thing I'd like to find out is, the site which was formerly the Orchard Supply area and the parking lot there, could that not be turned into something that would be useful, if possible? Maybe purchase it from the former owners? It's just standing there vacant. It's just an empty lot at this point. So, that's another alternative. I agree, we should have a designated area for the RVs. And I'm not a business owner in that respect, but I do have a small business, and some of the people that I deal with, I think, are concerned about the lack of parking as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers on item one? Any other speakers on item one? Okay. Thank you all so much for coming tonight and for your comments. Council's now going to discuss and take action on this item. And I'm going to start the discussion and offer a motion for purposes of discussion. So, I want to thank everyone who came tonight and who, I think, provided very eloquent comments, those that are business owners, residents of West Berkeley, and those that are living in recreational vehicles. And what I heard from nearly everyone was real compassion for the challenges that those that are living in RVs and those that are living on the streets are experiencing, and I think this entire council shares that concern. And we have been working very hard over the past two years to significantly increase shelter, housing resources, outreach, and thanks to the voters of Berkeley, this past November, through the passage of Measure P, the city will have additional resources to further expand our efforts to address the crisis of homelessness on our streets. I will admit that this decision has been very difficult for me. I have a great deal of compassion and concern for those that have ended up living on our streets in recreational vehicles, because they cannot afford the rising cost of housing, some of whom are families with children, some of whom are long-term chronically homeless individuals. But I will also acknowledge that there are new people that have come to our city who have not been living in our community for extended periods of time. And there has been a significant increase in the number of recreational vehicles in Berkeley, and over the last year specifically. While there was this informal count of about 198, there's probably over 300. That was just looking in the western part of Berkeley. There are large concentrations of RVs in other residential parts of the city of Berkeley. And so, while I'm very sympathetic to the challenges that people are facing, we have to question at some point, how much more can we, as a city, accommodate? How much more can we address this problem? This is a regional problem, this is a statewide problem, and while we are doing everything we can to help those people who are without homes, we do have to establish some reasonable policies and limits on how many more RVs can come to our city, to ensure that parking is available, to ensure that our businesses and our residents can enjoy a decent quality of life as well. I want to address a few points that have been raised. Many people talked about the Marina, and why people can no longer park at the Marina, and why vehicles were removed from the Marina. As many people know, City Council in early July did discuss potentially allowing short-term parking of recreational vehicles at the H.S. Lordships parking lot, given that the business had closed at that time. And we were informed by the State of California that to allow vehicular camping in the Marina would be a violation of state law. It would violate the grant that we have been given from the State of California to manage their tidelands, and that residential uses and vehicular camping were not permissible uses on the tidelands. So, that put us in a very untenable legal situation, and the city decided to enforce those regulations, and people moved out of the Marina. Even before that time, many of us have been working to try to find a location in the city of Berkeley or in the surrounding region for people to park their vehicles. Let me tell you, if we had found a place, we would have already opened that secure vehicle parking location. We cannot find a place larger enough to be able to provide secure parking for people in our community. So, we're looking outside of Berkeley. City of Oakland and Alameda County are exploring a location for secure vehicle parking in East Oakland, and we will be speaking with the City of Oakland about potentially partnering in that project. We have been in discussions with Contra Costa County and the cities of Richmond and Albany around potential locations. We've approached Caltrans to see if land is available for vehicular parking, and we've reached out to the faith community. All these have been efforts that we have engaged in with the hope of finding a location or locations for sanctioned vehicular parking, camping services run by a nonprofit organization. But at the present time, we don't have a location. Unlike Oakland, unlike other parts of Alameda County, we are very constrained in having large pieces of land available for public use. And we will continue to look for a location, and as part of the motion that I'm going to offer, I'm going to reiterate our commitment to trying to find a regional, long-term, nonprofit RV site. So, many of the suggestions, comments that were made this evening, we all agree, these have been efforts that we've been working very hard over the last year to try to address. I received countless emails from residents and business owners in West Berkeley, and Councilmember Kessawani and I have been working hard with our city manager to try to find solutions to these challenges. I represent all of Berkeley, the hills as well as West Berkeley. I take this issue very seriously, and we need to balance-- And we need to balance the need to address the daily needs, basic needs of those that don't have homes, with protecting the quality of life of our residents and businesses. So I do think we do need to put in place new policies. Clearly, our existing ordinances are not clear enough to give our police the enforcement tools to be able to enforce existing statutes. We do need to set some limits. We do need to put some new programs in place to provide additional outreach and social services and resources for those people that are living in their RVs, with the goal of ultimately making sure that people don't have to live permanently in their RV, but can live indoors, can move into a shelter and move into permanent housing. That is the city's goal. The city's goal is not to have large numbers of people living in RVs and living on our streets in tent encampments. It's to move people into permanent housing, because housing is the solution to homelessness. But until that time, we have to recognize that there are people that are living in RVs, there are people that are living in tents on our street, and we have to manage that. We have to provide sanitation facilities, we have to provide services, and we have to work with them to provide them the opportunity to move off the streets and move into permanent housing. So we take this issue very seriously, recognizing that we need to address the growing quality of life impacts that our businesses and our residents have experienced, but that we also have to continue our efforts to find a location for secure parking and continue to provide the necessary services and housing supports to end the cycle of homelessness. So with that, I'd like to make a motion, which is a hybrid of Option B and Option A. So my motion is to adopt a first reading of an ordinance amending Berkeley in its attachment, Attachment One in the packet, adopt a first reading of an ordinance amending Berkeley Municipal Code Section 1440-120, as well as to adopt Option A. And with the direction that we will begin enforcement of Municipal Code Section 1440-120. But once Option A is ready to be implemented, we will proceed with a permit system, as has been presented by the city manager. I would like the implementation of Option B, the adoption of the ordinance amending Section 1440-120, to be preceded by outreach efforts described in the staff report and to be further developed, including appropriate notice, flexible funding defined, in defined circumstances to repair broken vehicles, to provide shelter and supports, as well as problem-solving to get individuals stable and rehoused. I would like to also add an amendment to state our intent to work with staff to identify and develop a temporary RV site that serves highly vulnerable populations, including families with children attending our Berkeley schools, as well as a regional, long-term, nonprofit RV site. So I'd like to offer that as a motion.
Second.
And just in closing, before I go to Councilmember Harrison, I want to say that this has been, I think, a very heartbreaking discussion this evening, to hear the challenges that people are facing who are living in RVs and living on our streets. We have a great deal of compassion for their, the challenges that they face. But we also, while we need to help them, we also need to ensure that everyone in our community, their safety and their quality of life is respected. And we will certainly continue to work to try to find a location for secure parking. But we also need to, we need to address the growing impacts that long-term RV parking have had in our community. Thank you. Councilmember Harrison.
I have a number of questions of staff. I thought we were going to ask questions before we move forward, because there are many things I don't understand about the proposal. And Mr. Mayor, this may apply also to your motion. So a couple of factual questions. One, do we know how many RVs are outside of D1? Of the 198 or so, are there 198 in District One plus, or are there 198 total with some outside of District One? Of the entire city? Okay. How many other RVs are there outside of that area in the city? Okay, so we don't have a number. But it seems to me what we have here is not a problem of too many RVs, we have a problem of distribution. This is the same problem we have with housing, and it's the same problem we have with services and everything else. We have 16 residential parking areas in Berkeley, and I like this permit idea for the 14 days. I think the 14 days is too short, from my point of view. But I like the permit idea, but I would suggest that these permits be given out, and this is one of my questions. Were you intending, Kristin, the permits be given out by parking zones, or were they general permits? What would they, what would they entitle someone to, this 14-day permit? Where would they be able to be?
I don't think that we got to that level of detail.
Okay. So one thing that I would like to see is that these permits be spread throughout the city. I'm willing to take 10 in the E-zone. Are you? Are you willing to take people in your neighborhoods? Because the problem that Councilmember Kersewani has been faced with, Kersewani, sorry, is unfair to her and her residents. But it's unfair because we've let it happen. We've let this problem all be concentrated in one place. We can't continue to do that. So if we do a permit system, I want to see it spread throughout the entire city. I also have a question about whether we've done any kind of analysis of the RV dwellers and how many of them. There was mention of people having children in the schools, people working in the city, people attending university. You know, a lot of the folks that are here are not here just because we're an attractive nuisance. I hear that all the time. You heard a lot of testimony from people that are here because they have kids in the schools. They were evicted, and they don't want to take their children out of the excellent Berkeley schools. They were evicted, and they cannot leave UC in the middle of their degree. They were evicted because they work for all of us, including a city employee that we heard from and an employee of LBL. So I guess one other data question I have is, have we done any analysis of who's there and why they're there, and how many of them were last housed in Berkeley? I know we have analysis of how many people were last housed in Alameda County for homeless people overall. Have we done a specific study of the people in the RVs? So we don't really have a sense of who these folks are. Okay. That's a concern for me, and I feel a rush to judgment before we know that data point. The other data point I noticed in the report was that we indicate there's 1.5 police and .08, 0.85 people in neighborhood services servicing, as it says, people with, that are issues evolving from RVs and other like situations. Do you have any staff analysis of how much time you actually spend on the RV population or problems caused in that neighborhood of those numbers? Of the 1.5 FTE for police and the .85 for neighborhood services? Any guesses? Okay. And the reason I ask that question is, we have a problem of homelessness. We don't have a problem of just RVs. We have a problem of homelessness, which is a problem of poverty. And again, we have a problem of distribution. I also wanted to ask another data question. I think I understood for the city manager, but I may have misunderstood this now in the city manager, that there may be some changes to this chart on Page Four that show that there's a ban against RV parking in every city surveyed, and that there's an RV permitting process only in Albany for residents. Did you indicate there might be some changes to this?
An explanation for which Lieutenant Fowles gave earlier today.
Great, thank you.
Would you like me to repeat what I did earlier, ma'am? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, no, on Page Four, I thought in talking earlier today to the city manager, she indicated that she thought the chart maybe needed some correction?
No, just an explanation, and Lieutenant Fowles gave that earlier.
Okay, great. Okay, I misunderstood that, sorry. Another question I have is, this is for the mayor. I don't really understand the proposal, Mr. Mayor, because are you saying that you'd have permits, but people could only park between 5:00 AM and 1:59 AM? And that in those middle three hours, they have to drive around? Because that's what this says. This says no parking between 2:00 and 5:00. I don't know, I'm actually legitimately confused.
The effect of the ordinance is that people would not be allowed to park overnight.
Okay, so we're giving permits for daytime parking.
Councilmember Kersewani, you want to clarify?
So the idea with Option A, once that's ready to be implemented, if somebody received a two-week permit.
Except quiet in the audience.
That would override the Option B, and they would be able to, that's my understanding, they would be able to stay for the full two weeks each year.
Under the permit system, yeah, they could stay, but after that, at that point, parking would not be allowed.
Okay.
Please, sir, please. Please, sir, please. Sir, you're out of order.
Okay, so we're saying we're combining these two things, and the 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM ban wouldn't apply during the two weeks? That's what I was confused by.
Correct. The ban would not apply during the two weeks.
So since we have many neighboring cities that do allow people to park their RVs on the streets, even though they're not supposed to, under their code? Because this chart reflects what's on the books, what's not, not what's real. We know Emeryville allows people to park on the street, even though they say they don't. I'm wondering if the two weeks is long enough. So my proposal is that we make this period a bit longer, more like a month, and that we spread it throughout the entire city. Again, I'm willing to take on some of this burden. I think this burden needs to be shared. I'm really upset that we continually push people into what we consider the poorer neighborhoods, and we expect those homeowners and those business owners, who are the people least able to deal with it, to deal with it, and for those RV dwellers to live really also in harder parts of town to live in. So I'd like to see us all share in that. The other, I did have one, two more very quick questions. One is for the city attorney. I heard earlier that we don't think that this violates Boise, but if people lose their van because it is towed and they are then living on the sidewalk, wouldn't they be protected by Boise at that point?
So I think the way that this ordinance is structured doesn't really trigger the Martin versus Boise case.
Okay.
Because this is really regulating parking.
But once they lose their home because they can't park anywhere, and their car is towed or their vehicle's towed, and they're sleeping on the street, then Boise will be invoked. I'm just wondering where we're going in the end. You know, we're going to do this. There's some number of people who are here that don't need to be here. There are people that are here because of kids, schoolwork. If we ticket them and take their car, they will be living on a sidewalk. I just want to ask the people throughout the whole city, is that a better solution? And won't we then be, then Boise will be invoked, in that hypothetical?
I guess I'm not going to go into hypotheticals at this point and kind of speculate on that issue.
Okay, all right. And then I have, I have one, I have one more final point that's really, I think, important. It was my item to do, and I want to thank Bryce Nesbitt, who's here tonight, about the, for the waste station. The idea that building a waste station will attract people to live here, I think, is fallacious. It will attract people to do the right thing with their waste. This morning, I personally cleaned shit off my front lawn again for the, probably the 100th time in the last year. It's not only people in D1 that have this problem, because we have nowhere for people to put it. This is the truth of it. I am really concerned about not including this waste disposal idea in your motion, Mr. Mayor. I really want to see us do this. And I think the option that the city manager offered, under Option Two, of a contracted service that would travel around, I think is a good one. It prevents us from having to build something. It allows for a flexible service. I don't see that as a reason people move. Oh, great, there's a, you know, shit pickup truck, and so I'm moving to Berkeley. That is not what's going to happen, okay? It's going to allow people to get rid of their waste in a responsible way. So I would like to add that.
I'm not going to accept that.
Okay.
The next item, as you know, please, ladies and gentlemen, we listen to you respectfully. Let the council discuss. The next item, Item Two, we're going to talk about how we can enhance our ability to provide sanitary facilities and increasing cleanup of our streets. And I think that can help address some of the issues that you're referring to.
Okay, that's great, that's very helpful. And then finally, on the side of the people living in the RVs, I would like this to be accompanied by a set of rules. I mean, if we're going to do anything, even the permits for two weeks or a month under my proposal, and whether concentrated or spread, this is what I would like to see. I would like to see that all vehicles have to be registered, that all vehicles have a parking permit in the situation, the system that we set up, that they have a clean and tidy appearance, just like we have a blight ordinance for properties that are not well-maintained. We would invoke that same ordinance, because even if we only have a few and only for a couple of weeks. I hear and I see in my own street, where I had somebody living in a van, by the way, for 15 years, who was fine, but another person moved in, and they had all this other stuff. It was the accumulation of things outside the van, the barbecue, the boat, the whole, you know, that was creating a lot of problems. So to require that whoever, whatever system we come up with, that there is some cleanliness requirement, that they follow neighborhood quiet hours. We have hours for businesses. We say you can't make noise before X time or after Y time. Walgreens across the street from me, it's in their use permit. You can't make noise after 10:00. That we have no dumping of any kind, and that we only have one vehicle dweller per block. I know those of you that find comfort in community and being near other vehicle dwellers are going to have a problem with that, but it's important to me that we spread this problem around from both points of view.
Was that a question?
And I think that's it. Thank you.
So I'll just say that I don't want to really get into the love, this level of detail. I think these are issues that we can work out in the implementation of the permits, permit system. But to say, ladies and gentlemen, please, but to say that there aren't RVs in multiple parts of the city is just not true. There's one across the street from my house in your council district, Councilmember Harrison. So it is an issue that does impact the whole city. It is disproportionately, there's a disproportionately large number of RVs in West Berkeley.
So are any of those acceptable alternatives to you in terms of a spread, a suggestion to the staff that they spread the parking permits around the city?
I'm willing to, I guess I'm, I'll be willing to accept then the motion for staff to consider in the implementation of Option A.
Okay, that's great.
Councilwoman Kersewani, is that okay?
I believe that that is mentioned in the report.
It's just not in the item, I mean, in the, in the motion.
Yeah, yeah. So I think, you know, yeah, I think that that makes a lot of sense, and I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. I'd also, as I mentioned, I'd like to see a longer period. I think a month is more reasonable.
I'm not going to accept that, I'm sorry.
Okay. And I'd like to also, you know, as we discussed, I'm really interested in this pumping station. So I have your commitment to talk about that under the next item. Right?
I believe that by increasing the number of portable restrooms, as well as making existing public restrooms available, that that will provide locations for people to use the restroom. I don't think a pumping station is needed if we're not going to allow the existing conditions of long-term RV parking on city streets.
Okay. And the last thing I'd like to say is, given that many, many, many people living in their vehicles actually work, go to school, have kids in school here, if they park somewhere else, they're going to bring that vehicle here in the daytime. Okay, so let's be realistic. If this is the only vehicle you have, how you get it to work? You drive this RV to Berkeley. So I think, no matter what we do, we need a long-term solution, someplace for people to park their RVs during the daytime, whether we have people living in them or not. And I sort of think that there are areas of the city where that could be possible. Somebody mentioned the Osh parking lot. We have about a half an acre of land that's only industrial. We have parts of the Marina that might be acceptable. We have to find a place for people to put these cars, because this is their only way to get here. They're going to have to park somewhere. So this is outside the scheme of having the two weeks for the permitted thing. They have to have someplace to put the vehicle during the daytime that isn't going to block businesses. It's not fair to the businesses in District One that everybody's parked right there outside their business. It's too hard to get in and out. So I feel it's incumbent on us, and it doesn't have to be part of a motion, I feel it's incumbent on us to find a parking place for RVs during the daytime.
That is definitely part of the motion.
It is.
It's trying to find a permanent location for RV parking.
Okay. Yes, and I hope, we did last year say that, and I hope that we really turn to doing that this year. Thank you.
As you know, Councilmember Harrison, has been ongoing. I'd like to thank Councilwoman Davila for her leadership and convenient dialogue on this issue with regional leaders. And I've certainly been, as our staff have been, searching for locations.
Yeah.
If anyone has any ideas of a large enough location, we would certainly welcome your input.
Yeah.
Councilmember Davila.
Can I just say one other thing on that?
Councilwoman Harrison, before we get to Davila.
And that is that I think we have been searching with the idea of a place for people to sleep. What I'm suggesting is, if we come up with a sleeping solution, we now turn to a daytime solution. It's a slightly different problem that's a little easier, possibly. Thank you.
Councilmember Davila. I want to thank everyone that came out tonight in support and to voice their opinions on the subject. It's a, it's a difficult decision. I am not in support of either A or B. We need to, this is just another gentrifying way of gentrification, in my mind, to eliminate RVs from our city, somewhere that we're supposed to be sanctuary. Sanctuary for whom? That's a good question. Sanctuary for cannabis? Sanctuary for everyone except RVs? Sanctuary for some other, except for other types of people on how? Unhoused? It's just, it's just really sad to think that we can't come up with an alternative solution than to kick them out after two freaking weeks. You know, they're not, you think people choose to live, some people do only choose because that's their only other alternative. They can't afford. The last 12 years, there was no, hardly any affordable units put into any of the developments in Berkeley. It's gonna be a long time before we get some affordable units in Berkeley, affordable for all different incomes. You know, we have to have these, you know, we need to come up with a better solution. Safe parking, the way that Oakland is doing with the interfaith communities, trying to put a few vehicles on their parking lots, then that means that with, with supportive services and money allocated from the city, why can't we look at that approach? Why can't we come up with that solution? Why do we have to kick them out of Berkeley after two freaking weeks? What the hell are they supposed to do? They've been unhoused and living in their vehicles for numbers of years and have all kinds of issues, the regular human beings too. I understand the businesses have issues, but I wonder have the businesses actually gone over and talked to the people in these RV vehicles? Have you tried to make them a better neighbor? Have you tried to, like, assist them in, in helping them get through their day-to-day without invading on your space, offering them a restroom? I mean, we haven't done enough as a city, I know that. Every time I go talk to people, the hot team hasn't been there, they haven't been approached by mental health services, not that they all need it. These graduate students are perfectly fine people, they might not need services. It doesn't have to come with services. So it's just, it's just really disheartening that we're gonna kick our community out of Berkeley. If you ask people where they come from, probably most of the people in this room haven't been born in Berkeley. They've only been, I've been here 37 years, but, you know, I mean, so I guess I'm a resident now, but, you know, they all haven't been, everybody doesn't, hasn't been born in Berkeley, but they live in Berkeley, they want to be in Berkeley, and they love Berkeley. And they're our neighbors, and they're our residents. And we need to treat them with respect and love, just like everybody else. So it's just really, really disheartening that you're gonna change the municipal code instead of trying to come up with a solution that is more humane and kind and compassionate and has empathy. I would suggest lengthening the time, because two weeks is just a pathetic, pathetic option. A month is not enough. I think three to six months, and then when you give, when you, after you've been there for six months or three months, to be, have the option, if you've been a good neighbor, to continue to be a good neighbor. Why, why? I mean, why do they have to leave the Berkeley that they've chosen to come to live in? Just because, just because they're not... It's just, it's just really sad to me. And the fact that we've had his lordships, I mean, I understand that, but, you know, they were in the shelter for how many days past the legal requirement? We could've just, I'm sure nobody's gonna come from those agencies and enforce RV parking, I mean, RV dwellers at his lordships if we were to allow them to be there. I don't know. I mean, the whole region is suffering. We have a parking space. We have several parking spaces. You know, we could do a kiosk where there's security, they could pay like $2 a night, come in, leave, or, or just like the vehicles that can't, you know, or talk to companies that have big parking lots. We have several markets, and just have them, a couple go in each parking lot for, you know, let's, let's have companies adopt RVs, so that three parking lots can, like, three RV dwellers can sit in a parking lot throughout the city of Berkeley. I mean, there's, we have to come up with alternative solutions and not just kick people out just because they're an inconvenience and maybe not aesthetically pleasing for some, but if you, and if we went there, if we provided pump-out, if we provided services to those that need it, you know, and if we had like a good neighbor policy that they could abide by, because a lot of these, a lot of people are being good neighbors. So, and then all the neighbors aren't in opposition, so to just blanketly do this is just, it's just sad. And we're not the progressive Berkeley that everybody thinks that we are. So, yeah, let's take the example of Oakland and find communities that are willing to adopt a few RVs in their parking spaces and provide revenue or money to these spaces where they can park to help them with services, laundry, showers, whatever they need to make their life better while they're in those spaces. We can do this. Thank you.
Councilmember Hahn.
Thank you very much. It's very heartening to hear from the community. It's hard and sad to hear of the struggles that people have, but I'm also heartened by the vast majority of comments, that there's just a lot, this is not easy, there's a lot of passion and care throughout this community, and I'm very proud to represent Berkeley. So, a couple of things. First of all, I'm definitely going to be supporting some kind of pump-out solution with the next item, which is more focused on that, and so I just want to let my colleagues know that I'm in support of that, and I look forward to the conversation about what that might look like, but I don't think it belongs in this item. The second is that I really love the spirit of one of the early speakers, I think it was Elise Mickelson, who, you know, said like, give, we want a certain number of people to have a permit to be on our block, because we want to engage with them, and we want to be helpful, and we want to welcome and help people in our community. And I, I second that sentiment, and to this point that, that Councilmember Harrison made, I don't consider it necessarily a burden for neighborhoods to have some, but I think what we're talking about here is this vast, this concentration, that just, you know, the impacts to the businesses and the other people living in that community, they're just too significant, and so I think that's what we're talking about. I, I don't want the kind of insinuation that people in other neighborhoods are hostile to the homeless, to, I can't leave that hanging there. We certainly don't have anything like the concentration in some of the other districts in my district, but I live near Live Oak Park, and there are RVs and people in their cars there. They're, my block, the block I live on, almost at all times has at least one vehicle that people are living in. I know that in Councilmember Wengraff's district, also particularly clustered around Codornese's
Codornese's.
Park. And I don't get a lot of complaints. I see people bringing people food and trying to be helpful, and so I really, I don't want us to get into this habit of thinking that there are segments of our community because of where they live, who are less compassionate and generous and caring than others. So I, I'd like to kind of correct the record there. So I support the dispersion, and that was part of the motion, and that's part of what staff put forward, and I'm not sure why there was any thought that we wouldn't be including that. So I just, I have one friendly amendment that I, I'm offering for the mayor and Councilmember Kessawani to consider, which is, in addition to what's already out there, to refer to staff, to look at what changes would need to be made to our ordinances and what programs would need to be put in place for us to allow temporary placement of RVs on private property, and that could be an individual who wants to host an RV at their home, or church, or synagogue, that might choose to host one or a few in their parking area, that, you know, something, and I'm making it up here, but for example, maybe a permit that's good for six months for someone who has done intake either through the hub, or through the Stair Center, or something like that, and who is engaged in services to try and become rehoused. And the idea would be that it would, you know, it's kind of like the Stair Center. You do intake, we are doing case management with you, we're trying to get you rehoused, and instead of staying in the dorm-like facility, this would be like another option for where you might be able to stay. And I think that would be a way for us to, you know, bring people onto private property when they're invited, and, and permit this, and make it allowable, and, and at the same time, the individuals knowing that they're getting this intensive case management and services so that they can be working on finding permanent, stable housing. So the Pathways Project was based on sort of a step idea, you know? We know that you might not get housed in one step, but we're trying to provide a variety of opportunities for you to move towards being permanently housed, and I'm hoping that that friendly amendment to refer that to staff might be something that you were amenable to.
Certainly. I mean, I believe that the existing, the existing municipal code does allow people to park RVs on private property.
But not live in them?
And I believe, right, Madam City Attorney?
I believe that, I believe that's true.
I think it's the housecar ordinance. But, but I do think creating a program whereby we can work with service provider too, and working with the faith community, and working with private individuals who'd like to permit people to park, you know...
Yeah, I don't have all the details figured out, but I feel like we should look at it.
I think it's a good suggestion, it's something we should explore. So I support that as a, as a friendly amendment.
So, and, you know, I appreciate this suggestion, Councilmember Hahn. I think we have to look at creative ideas, and so I'm also supportive of this concept. I would suggest that we make it a referral to staff.
Yes, should be a referral.
Yes, that's what it was.
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. That's, that's it. I'm gonna be supporting the motion.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Robinson.
Good evening. Thank you to everyone that came out to the meeting tonight. I had a couple granular questions for staff first. I had the same question, kind of concerns around the concentration question, you know, really, no issue with people living in RVs in the city, but that they're all concentrated here has really, you know, galvanized the issue. And it was suggested in, in public comment that they've been being encouraged to gravitate toward, toward these blocks west of San Pablo especially. Can you speak to the extent to which that's true, and if that was a strategic or intentional choice, and why?
I have never heard that, I've never said it. The officers of work for me have never said that either.
Okay, that's useful. And Mayor Aragon, I don't know if I caught, was the adjustments to 1276-10 included in the motion?
No, it was not.
Okay. That, next is that question, yeah, the housecar definition adjustment seems overbroad in a, anyway, that's beside the point. Was there, the consideration of, I mean, it seems like a lot of the issues that neighbors have had with, with RVs, parking is, you know, especially when they're in front of businesses, or next to businesses, next to residences, was consideration taken to, you know, not so much by geography, but outline where people maybe could or couldn't park based on what they're near you and what facilities they're near to? And would it be possible to just say people shouldn't be able to park, you know, within a certain number of feet from a business or a residence?
I could speak quickly to that, and would defer to lieutenant files. We haven't gone into detail about how the permit system might or might not work. I will say, the more complicated and complex it is, the harder it is to enforce.
Right.
And so that's just something to consider as we look at this in more detail if we do.
Gotcha. Okay. Well, here, here's where I'm at. I visited, I visited Ethan Harrison and the surrounding blocks the other night, and I've been lucky enough to meet with a number of the people that have been affected by this concentration of RVs. Many of whom are here, and thank you, thank you so much for meeting with me. And I, you know, I know we have a heartbreaking decision before us, but what I, what I keep coming back to in my own head is knowing that, you know, whatever we decide tonight, little as I may be able to sleep afterwards, I will have the privilege of doing so in a bed of my own. Dingy little apartment that I share with a few people, but that I can afford. And I know that the status quo is untenable, and I know, actually, I wrote down a list of things I felt like were missing, from, from option A and option B, talking about, you know, targeting your families with students in USD, the disabled, the elderly, a lot of which has been incorporated in the mayor's motion. I will say, I think the 14 days is woefully sufficient, as someone sort of alluded to in the comments, I mean, that's really sufficient for a vacation, but not for creating a safety net for people. But, you know, all at the same time, there's, there is incredible regional efforts happening to create a space where these people can go when they are pushed out of the city, which is exciting, and I think the motion we have before us would be really exciting, and something I'd love to approve, once we know that that actually exists. But, but right now, I can't find it, find rhythm in my heart to support either option or this, this hybrid proposal when I don't know where we're asking people to go. And the, right, we, we know that this, this problem is, is a direct result of our, of our housing crisis, our housing affordability crisis, and our failure over decades to build the affordable housing that the region and the city needs. And it's been said several times that these issues are regional, the housing issue is regional, the RV issue is regional, but when other cities are letting our most vulnerable residents down, I don't feel like that means that we should too. That's not regional cooperation, that's just tagging along. And, yeah, I've known people to, to be in exactly this situation, I was glad so many, including, you know, recent alumni, you know, the same age as me, who I, who I can relate to deeply, who have been in, in situations like this. But to live in an RV and to, or to live in a car is to grasp at straws for the last shelter available to you. And for us, as the governments of this city, to deny people that last option doesn't feel just to me. And again, I'm, we're moving toward better solutions, and I, I would hope, I have a suspicion that this, this motion will pass, but I won't be voting for it today. I would have hoped that we could make this choice, adopt this plan, adopt a similar permitting process that will really be good for us, once we know where we're pushing people to. Because the terror and instability that comes with living on the brink of homelessness can, cannot be ignored. And neither, of course, can the inconvenience of having someone make a home on your curb, but in this discussion, we must recognize what is inconvenience, even if severe inconvenience, and what is a matter of basic survival. Thanks.
Thank you very much. So we have some council members who have not spoken, and then we have some council members that would like to speak again. And so we have Council Vice Mayor Wengraff, and we have Councilmember Bartlet, and Councilmember Kessawani, and Councilman Drasti, and I know we have a queue, but I would like to get to those council members that have not spoken first, and, and then if there's round two of comments, I would like to limit it to two minutes, because we do need, we do have another item, and we actually need to take a caption and break. So Vice Mayor Wengraff?
I will be very brief. This is, this is a very challenging problem for us, and I want to thank Councilmember Davila, and the mayor, and Councilmember Kessawani for all of the work that they've done on this issue, struggling to find a way forward. I would like I would like to think about this in terms of short-term, midterm and long-term options. I know that we're working very hard to find a permanent site, but I really like Councilmember Hahn's idea of doing a campaign to our community, asking people to step up and allow people to use their driveways or yards, also churches and schools. And see, you know, we're a very compassionate community. And I think we may, we may actually get some results, but we have to put some energy into letting people know that this is something that they can do. I have a question for staff. The campers that are not motorized, that are usually hitched to an automobile, are, are they covered under the Motor Vehicle Code?
Simple answer, ma'am, yes, they are.
It is, it does?
They have a license plate, they're covered by the, by the vehicle code.
I see. Okay. All right, I wasn't sure about that. I'm going to support the motion. I think we have to do something. I think we have to try to find a balance between the needs of our businesses and residents and RV dwellers. I think our businesses have suffered and tolerated a lot and, and we need to do something. It's, it's not working. What we have now is not working. I hope we can find a better solution. And I have a question, I have a question for, I guess it would, maybe Paul. Do we have available space at the Stair Center for a few RVs?
There's not space for a few RVs. I mean, it could be considered, I suppose, what we were looking at doing was another trailer in that site, which would be more people for the same amount of space is what we're considering right now, so. But we haven't considered the RV or tried to measure it out and see.
Okay, because I was just thinking, we put a lot of energy and resources into developing that site and we have showers and laundry and bathrooms. And if we could share that space with RV dwellers and at the same time get them into the system for help, it, it seems to me that would be great. So I don't want to make that a formal motion, but I want it, I want to put it out there as a possible idea to pursue. So I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to go to Councilor Bartlett, Kesarwani, Drasti, Davila and Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is, of course, as always, another race to the emotional and moral bottom that we're faced with every time we have to choose how to care for people. As, as, as the need grows and grows and grows, you know, this is, it's a heartbreaker, it really is. And I do want to thank this community for their, for their deep compassion to willingly tax themselves $130 million in order to address this issue. And so that being said, I'm curious, I guess this is for, for staff. Could any of the Measure O and P funds I've just referenced, could any of them be used to potentially lease some land? I've heard, I've heard this five acres number a couple of times. You know, Alameda County has a lot of uncorporated land that's not far from highways or other services. Would it be possible for some of this money to be used in some sort of a lease arrangement? Does anyone know?
Measure P is a general fund, so that could certainly be used for that purpose. O, we'd have to look at, I, I don't believe it would qualify for that.
Okay. And thank you. Okay, that's, that's, that's good to know. And, and of course, you know, I have to, I have to empathize with my colleague, Ms. Kesarwani, because I'm a big believer in regional equity in terms of the compassion load. Because certain districts, you know, are definitely experiencing the compassion more than others. So I would, I would back a dispersment of the permits, et cetera. And, and I think I would like to explore more regional issues because this, you know, you saw the chart of other cities. It's, it's a difficult conversation to have with, with, with community members explaining that we are the only ones bearing this, this more increasingly expensive dilemma. So I'll probably be supporting the motion with the caveat to disperse the permits.
Yes. Councilmember Kesarwani.
Disperse to two weeks' notice?
Please, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, I want to thank all of the council members who've given thoughtful comments. I want to thank everyone for coming tonight. I really appreciate hearing from you. I've really been working hard on this issue. You know, some issues, as we know, are easy, others are hard and it's hard to figure out what the right thing to do is. But I also believe that we've been elected to tackle these, these really tough challenges and we are making our best attempt tonight to do what, what we believe to be the best thing for the whole community. It's not easy for me and I know it's not, hasn't been easy for the mayor either. It, it really does bother me that cities like Berkeley are put in the position to face these impossible choices of having to balance the needs of people who are sheltering in their RVs and vehicles because they have lost permanent housing or simply can't afford how, how expensive it is to live here. You know, and, and as well as the interests of businesses and neighbors who feel overwhelmed by the high concentration of RVs in West Berkeley. I feel, I, I just need to say that this should not be happening in the wealthiest country in the world. There ought to be a social safety net that does a better job of providing for people who are facing a hard time. I believe that it is the primary role of our federal government to protect the most vulnerable, not to further enrich the wealthy or to pass corporate tax cuts. And, and so this is an incredible injustice, but nevertheless, you know, we're elected leaders and we have to do the best that we can with the resources that we have. And it's true, we, you know, we also have ourselves to blame for part of this problem. We haven't created enough housing. We are working as a council to, to work on long-term solutions to the lack of affordable housing and that's a really serious issue that we are doing our best to tackle, you know, to the best that we can. But I also believe that we need to manage the immediate situation in West Berkeley. I have spent time since I, I was elected in December, going out and talking to people who are in RVs and vehicles and living unsheltered in West Berkeley and, you know, those conversations are really hard for me because I feel that, again, we're just in a really difficult position and we, we do the best we can with the limited resources that we have. You know, I'll say, I, I've also met with the West Berkeley small business owners, some of whom came tonight and shared their experiences with this. And, you know, they have told me that they are concerned about the accessibility of their businesses to customers and the safety of their employees who are walking longer distances at night to get to their parked cars. Of course, I, I hear every single day from neighbors who feel frustrated that public streets have been occupied for, by RVs for extended periods of time. We get those emails and calls every single day. I, I spend weekends calling back neighbors and listening to the, the challenges that they're facing. And I want everyone in our community to have a safe place to be. I want people who are sheltering in RVs and cars to have a safe place to park. And I appreciate that our motion expresses our intent to continue to find spaces. I think we need to look at sort of temporary emergency spaces that we can find within the community for highly vulnerable populations like families that have kids in Berkeley schools. And also recognize that this is a regional problem and Berkeley can't shoulder the burden on its own. So we do have to partner with neighboring cities and with Alameda County. I know the mayor is, had talked in his remarks about all of the different neighboring communities that we are reaching out to. And we will continue to do that until we can, we can create a, a nonprofit RV site that will be a home for people who aren't able to be in, in permanent shelter at this time. I also appreciate, I want to thank Lieutenant Files for talking about what other cities are doing. I think we do have to recognize this is a regional problem and recognize that we can pair our enforcement with outreach. I mean, something that hasn't been talked about is our, very much is our intent to do noticing prior to this, these policy changes going into effect, to do the flexible funding so that if people need to get their RV repaired, that they could have an ability to do that. As well as do problem solving with people to figure out, you know, is there a family member or a friend who can, who can help them, you know, potentially store their vehicle in a driveway, for instance, in light of this situation? You know, I know those are, those aren't the ideal solutions, but it's, it's, you know, the best that, that we can do right now to handle a situation in, in West Berkeley that's really kind of reached a crisis point. So again, I, I just want to say that this hasn't been easy, it hasn't been an easy decision for me. I, I, I think about the stories of everybody that I've spoken to and everyone in our community matters. And again, I just want to say that we are doing the best that we can, given the resources that we have and the, the, the complexity of the challenges that we face. So thank you all again for coming and for sharing your perspectives. It really does mean a lot and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Drasti.
Thank you. And thank you everyone for coming here this evening. This is really a challenging issue, is an incredibly complex issue. Like the mayor said, I know that you all have been looking at various solutions and really working hard regionally. I know I spoke, I've spoken with many elected officials within the past week about how we can collaborate to pursue evidence-based practices to help end homelessness and provide more affordable housing. But we are really, really faced with some big challenges in West Berkeley and I, I really am empathetic to the people living in, in West Berkeley, whether they're in RVs or if they're in homes. I'm also sympathetic to businesses. You know, and ultimately, I guess the question is, how can we best help our entire community, you know, our homeless individuals, businesses, residents, given the, the finite resources we have? How can we best serve people to get them off of, off the street, get them the basic needs that they have? And I think as Councilmember Kesarwani mentioned, this is really a function of, of a really broken government, particularly our federal government. We, many cities are, are faced with these incredibly challenging issues. And I liked Councilmember Wengraff's idea of, of private citizens stepping up because of this, the, these constraints that we have as a city. I have a couple of questions. One, I, I was just wondering around the outreach when crafting this, this particular item around outreach to stakeholders. And I was just wondering whether you or the mayor wanted to, to walk me through some of the, the engagement of stakeholders that, that you did.
Sure. Councilmember Drasti, you know, as I mentioned in my comments, you know, I have gone out with my aide Beth and we have gone out to West Berkeley a number of times to speak to people who are in RVs, to hear personally about their situations and understand the, the challenges that they're facing. The mayor and I had a meeting with West Berkeley businesses and employees to hear how they're experiencing these impacts. And, you know, I think that both of us often are receiving emails, as I, as I noted, every single day from neighbors. And, and we hear from, from neighbors who, who've called in and spoken to us to share their concerns about how this situation is experienced by them as well.
Well, I must say that I've received some of those emails and, and I know that I have many parent friends at home watching on television who are putting their kids to bed and they've said that this is an important issue to them as well because the status quo clearly is, is not working and we need to figure out an avenue forward. I have one other question around, for, I guess it would be staff or perhaps the mayor, if you have this, this answer. Can you, can you tell me a little bit more about Oakland's policy that they're pursuing around the, the RV lot? Can we get any more details from you all or whoever created this report?
That wasn't within the purview of what I was instructed to look at, so.
Okay.
The current details.
Just the...
Right, this snapshot is of December 2, 2018. We went together.
Okay, yeah. And I'm, and just to say, I'm, I met with Mayor Schaaf last week. This was, we, we couldn't cram in all, everything, so I, I, I don't have this information as well and I could have gotten it, so I'm, I apologize for putting you on the spot.
I can add a little bit and maybe Mr. Bunhaggy can as well. My understanding is that they're partnering with County of Alameda on a site in East Oakland for secure parking. And if there's anything else, Mr. Bunhaggy might be able to add?
I don't have a lot of detail on it either. That's about the extent of it. Obviously, we can get more.
But I'll just say, just on that point, we live in Alameda County. Alameda County has a number of, of social service organizations or behavioral healthcare services or, or housing, housing and community development or social service departments. Berkeley gets very little from Alameda County compared to other jurisdictions to address the issue of homelessness. And I know Oakland's been challenging Alameda County to increase its commitment as well. So we are looking at how we can work together, Albany, Berkeley, Emeryville and Oakland to work together to try to secure state resources and county resources. And it may be that at some point in the future, we're going to form a formal joint powers authority in order to help pull our resources together because this is not a Berkeley problem. This is a regional problem and we cannot solve it alone. Sorry, I took your time.
No, no, that's fine. So I'll, I'll just close by saying, you know, today alone, I've spoken to a dear friend who lived in his car for, for a long time, kicked out from his family. I've spoken to West, West Berkeley business owners and I've also spoken to West Berkeley residents. You know, all, all, these, these three people in particular are, are close, close friends of mine. And I know the decision we're going to make tonight is probably not going to please any of them, but unfortunately, this is the, the situation that we're placed in. And I want to thank all of you for all of the work that you're doing. Councilmember Davila, I know this impacts your district as well. Councilmember Kesarwani, the mayor, everyone else here. I know this is a, a very challenging issue, so thank you for your, your work.
Thank you very much. So we have, I think we've gone through all the council members who have not spoken. So we have Councilmember Davila, Harrison and Hahn who would like to speak for a second time. And I would ask, unless there's a burning desire to speak after that, that we should proceed to a vote. I am going to use the chair's prerogative and set the clock for two minutes for the second round of comments. So Councilmember Davila.
I think that we should also keep to the queue. I mean, I understand how you wanted to hear from people that haven't spoken, but we have a queue, but, so anyway. So I, I just wanted to ask staff how many times that they visited the RVs before they came up with this proposal. And then I'm also wondering, like, what happens when you get numerous tickets? This could lead to people getting arrested, going to jail, and that's going to be a consequence that I don't think, I know I do not want to see. The pump out could be at the transfer station that you're going to be revamping soon. I think you should consider that, as well as some kind of composting toilets throughout the city. But I also just wanted to talk about what my office is working with, the Interfaith Council of Alameda County. And we are, our goals are to launch a mass mobilization with the Interfaith and CBO community, business partnerships to create short and medium term solutions to address immediate needs for, of homeless members of our communities. Support a county-wide and cross-county coordination in tracking homeless's, homeless services and programs. Scale up best practices and model programs and leverage all the existing services and programs. Increase resources for solutions to homelessness. We're asking faith leaders to provide a, a location for safe parking, provide a location for semi-perm... We're asking faith leaders to provide a location for safe parking, provide a location for semi-permanent housing to one to three tiny vehicles, tiny homes or RVs. Sponsor or host a tiny home village, which any of us could do, or an encampment. Open their facilities for laundry and meals, and receive coordination and distribute community donations. Also...
If you could please wrap up.
I just wanted to, yeah. So the host committee is Feinstein, Skinner, Barbara Lee, Buffy Wicks, Eduardo Martinez from Richmond, Councilmember, Alameda County Supervisor Keith Carson, Nate Miley, our mayor, Reverend Ken Chambers from the Interfaith Council of Alameda County, and Reverend Ambrose Carroll, and there's quite a few others. And this is something that my office has been working on for the last several months. And we all have to find solutions to this issue. And I honestly feel, and I'm thankful that I have at least one other person that feels the same way as I do on this council, this is not the answer. I think it needs to go back to a commission or one of the committees that we have to come up with some better solutions, because this is not it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harrison.
What's concerning me in this entire conversation is I think we are demonizing the people in RVs when we have a different problem. I feel like we're looking for a solution, and I agree the RVs are a particular problem because they're big, and they're parked on the street, and they're in the way. Some people feel afraid of them, and they are sometimes inconveniently placed and make it hard for other people to park and to get into businesses, et cetera. So it is different than someone sleeping on the sidewalk. But we have this problem with homelessness. We're going to demonize 300 or so people that live in these vehicles when we have 1,000 people living unsheltered on our streets every day. And I just feel like the money we will spend on this is not worthy. We, in terms of the idea of having, offering people to allow people to park their RV in their driveway or their backyard, I really like that idea, but I think partnering that with, you have to say you're on the road to permanent housing, these people have a home. It's called an RV. I mean, we, let's think back. Let's think back to the '40s, '50s, '60s, '70s. People lived in RVs. We are just now so well off that we don't want to see that. Now, having said that, I still cannot leave District 1 in this position. I cannot leave them with this huge number of people there all the time. It's just too much to ask of anybody. But I would, one, would like to, the part that we said would be a referral about allowing people to park on private property and sleep in their RV, I would like to see that be a short-term referral. I don't want this put off. I don't want this to become part of RRV. That's our ranking system, for those of you that don't know. And I'm very interested in doing that, but I'm not interested in saying that these people need services necessarily. We have our LBL employee who's still here, thank you for staying, who doesn't need services. He's a scientist. He knows what he's doing. So I'm kind of feeling like I would like to make that one amendment, that we make that a short-term referral. If not, if you're not willing to do that, I will bring it back as a short-term referral.
I just don't think it can be implemented as a short-term referral, but that does not mean that we're not going to take this seriously and not begin to work on it. And it's actually building on some of the work that's already been done by members of the council. So I don't think we can say something's a short-term referral when it's not a short-term referral. Sorry. But that doesn't mean it's not a good idea and that we can't begin to work on it.
Okay, and...
I mean, if it's not a short-term referral, I hope that doesn't mean that we wait until the RRV process. I think we can begin to explore this, and I'm happy to work with you on this, Madam City Manager, as long as it's a heavy lift, so.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It appears that we're all working on it from different angles, so I think we should be able to address it rather rapidly, hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Councilmember Han, then Davila, and then I'd like to call the question.
Yeah, I just want to address, and I'm going to start doing this more routinely, what I believe to be a myth about the housing crisis. I just want to clarify that the housing crisis that we're in is not all a city's fault, certainly not all Berkeley's. There are many players and many forces out there that have contributed to the housing crisis we're in, and I think we should call on all of them to help us get out of it. The first is a profit-driven housing market. Housing is a human right. It's not suitable for an unfettered market. We are having a conversation now about single-payer health care because we recognize that health care is a human right. I think we need to start having a conversation about that around housing as well. One of the speakers mentioned that in Germany, they have kind of state-mandated rent control. My husband is Norwegian. In Norway, they have the same thing. People are building apartment buildings, and they're making a decent return, and there are very tight rules about rent prices, so it can be done. Banks and investors, we are approving big projects, and then they don't get built. Atchison Commons, Harold Way, we give them permits, but then they can't get their financing together, and they can't get their investors together, and they don't break ground. So it's not just the cities who need to get their acts together. Now, government also does have a role. I'm not going to deny that, you know, but I just think we need a bigger picture here. Berkeley is nowhere the poster child of the problem. We are actually almost 100% built out and mostly with housing. So yes, we have to do more, but we're not this awful community that hasn't done anything, and it's not all our fault. We have upzoned. Oh, my time's out. Unfettered job growth, profit, et cetera. I think we need to have a broader set of people helping us address this crisis.
Councilmember Davila.
Yeah, I didn't get the question answered about how many times there was outreach to the RVs from the staff. And then I just wanted to bring to the point that once all those buildings are completed on San Pablo, close to Page and Harrison, and the area where the RVs are parked, there's not going to be any parking for anybody else. So I just wanted to make that point. And I'd like to get the question answered. And I would like to also really refer this to the committees to really hash it through to come up with a better solution. So I'd like to make that a motion to send, refer this to the appropriate committees, because it's more than one.
Okay, that's a substitute motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? Seconded by Harrison. Councilwoman Harrison, do you want to speak?
No, I just wanted to second it. Thank you.
Okay, all right. So let's first go on the substitute motion, which is to refer the item to the, I guess, appropriate policy committee, which I think would be the Life Enrichment Committee, right?
Correct.
Because it deals with homelessness?
Correct.
Okay, so that's the motion, refer it to committee and not to take action tonight. Let's call the roll.
Okay.
Droste, you might want to come back. Let's wait one second. All right, if we can call...
Okay. I'll go slow. Councilmember Kessawani?
No.
No. Councilmember Davila?
Yes.
Bartlet?
No.
No. Harrison?
Yes.
Han?
No.
No. Councilmember Wengraff is absent. Councilmember Robinson?
No.
Sorry. No. Councilmember Droste?
Absent.
Absent. Mayor Aragine?
Councilmember Wengraff, how do you vote on the motion to refer the item to committee? There's a substitute motion to refer this item to a policy committee. How do you like to vote?
Sorry. No.
No. Okay. And then Mayor Aragine?
No.
Okay, that motion fails.
Motion fails. So on the main motion, which was my motion as amended, which includes the adoption in the first reading of the ordinance amending Section 1440 120, as well as referring to the city manager to implement Option A, to develop a permit system, and the other elements that we discussed this evening. And essentially, what that would mean is that upon the effective date of the ordinance, that we, hopefully prior to the effective date of the ordinance, we will begin outreach and notification of the new regulations, and then at the effective date of the ordinance, the city would be able to begin enforcement. And then ultimately, we'll be moving towards the development of a permit system in the city of Berkeley. That's the motion. And the other elements, you know, referring the creation of this new program, to partner with churches and private individuals to provide parking, are reiterating our efforts to try to find a regional, long-term, nonprofit RV site. And I believe, and there are a couple of other elements of the motion as well.
Yes, including distributing the permits throughout the city.
Equitably distributing the permits throughout the city of Berkeley, yes.
Okay. On that motion, Councilmember Kessawani?
Yes.
Councilmember Davila?
No.
Bartlet?
Yes.
Harrison?
Pass.
Han?
Yes.
Wengraff?
Yes.
Robinson?
No.
Droste?
Yes.
Mayor Aragine?
Yes.
And Councilmember Harrison?
No.
No. That motion carries.
Motion carries. Okay. So that completes this item. We're going to take a 10-minute recess, and we'll come back for item two.